It is now 4:02. We will start the March 11th County Council Budget Meeting. Peter, if you can lead us into this pledge of reason.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Peter? And thank you to everyone out there who is inside listening to us instead of outside enjoying these beautiful days. We will start out as usual with public comment. First, I will turn it over to Paul already. If we have any written appeals to come in.
We don't have any written comments.
Having no written comments. We will now turn to the public. Let them have their hand raised. Okay, no public comment. We'll then move on to item D.
I make a motion to consider and take action on the proposed fiscal years 2021, 2022 budget. Joe Cavanaugh, first.
Motion in a second. Kathy?
Can I ask you to vote on that motion, please? That you're going to consider it?
Okay. We are going to vote on that motion first, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Kathy?
So for tonight, I thought I'd tell you our new schedule. We're going to start off with Paula Lanson, Chief of Police. Then we're going to go to Community and Recreation with Nancy Perrin. Then we're hoping that we are going to take dinner. But if it were quicker, we won't take dinner. Then Fire and Rescue, Economic Development, the Library, and then Public Works. And hopefully, we'll get through all of those accounts. And then we're going to hit the revenue side. And I think after that, we've gone through everything. So that's what our goal is for tonight.
Great.
And we will start now with Paula Lanson. And he is on...
Where are we? Page 31. Brian, what color shoes did that have then?
I'm sorry?
What color shoes did that have for the police?
Blue.
Next year.
We've been having a little game of the tap. So the police budget is a percentage change of 3.07%. I just wanted to go over a couple of things, and then I'll have Paula Lanson talk about some things. So the insurance compliance with the police accountability bill has resulted in $105,000 added to the police department's budget. Just to tell you what that 105 is, is $7,200 is drug testing, $10,800 is behavioral health evaluations, $45,000 is racial diversity training, that's on overtime, $12,000 is behavioral health overtime, and $30,000 is racial diversity training. So that comes to $105,000. Other things in this account is just to note is that the full-time salary accounts do not include general wage increases as the union contracts would expire, as we talked about yesterday. They're all in the General Administration account. So the only wages that are in here is people that have had a step increase. The police account includes funding for three new 24-hour patrol vehicles. And I think that's it. There's really nothing that new, other than the police accountability bill. And the other thing, though, we do have, we continue to have, due to COVID, we have money budgeted for the Rails to Trails and different things like that. Did we put the electric bikes in? How many did we do for that?
It was one additional.
One additional electric bike, just for the Rails to Trails, for the police department. And that helps them get along because we have so many Rails to Trails. So again, our Rails to Trails and our river frontage was used quite a bit last year. We expect that that's going to happen again this year. So we do have money in the budget to try to be able to have a police presence, a CSO presence on the trails and at the river. So is there any specific questions? Or would you like Paul maybe to talk a little bit more about the police accountability bill and some of these items?
Yes. You also made the statement that I retired, and now you get an electric bicycle? I want to stay on.
You know, I would like to see how you put the dog on the back of the bicycle.
That was a little...
On the bike part, that's all.
There you go.
Okay. Well, thank you to the chief. So obviously, some of these prices here, the behavioral health evaluations are required by the bill. And so we have picked a provider, and we are contracting with them, and they have to see every officer. There's also an additional overtime. So obviously, anything we do in training, anything that is required for drug testing, those sorts of things, your patrol officers won't be able to go during their regular time. Now, we can, you know, if we have a special projects officer or if we have a detective, we can adjust their schedule a little bit. However, for all of our patrol officers, which, as you know, is our biggest division within the police department, we cannot take them off of the road to send them for these evaluations and all sorts of things. So that's why there's also an increase in the overtime. The racial diversity training is twofold. One is, the group that was meeting had had a great idea about... I think most of you know that a great majority of our arrests of younger people and people in their early 20s, et cetera, is at West Farms Mall for thefts and et cetera. And they thought it would be a great idea if we provided some racial diversity training for all of the stores they're at. Because there's a consortium of stores, obviously, at West Farms. We have an officer who, I think, as you know, that they pay for, they reimburse the town for, he's assigned there. And he has a good working relationship, obviously, with all the loss prevention, all the managers from all the stores. And he does some quarterly training with them, usually quick training and that sort of thing. But one of the ideas, and we floated it by the management there, and also the management of the mall, but also the management of the stores, was some racial diversity training for their employees. And they liked the idea. And so we have put in some money to bring in some experts, outside experts, to help do some training there. That's just one part. There's also a three-day training that I've been talking to several chiefs about. And, you know, it's to do with racial diversity, implicit bias, and several other issues. And you bring in outside trainers to train all our list of officers. And it's a three-day training program for them. And we'll obviously incorporate, there's been a lot with mental health-type training, people with autism, elders, and so schizophrenia, and all the very many aspects of the population that we deal with day in and day out. And so we will cover that in this three-day training. And every police officer, every sworn member of our police department will get it. But it's not cheap. We have to bring people in, and we have to touch every single officer for three days. So that's why you're seeing, I think, you know, an increase in many of these.
Paul, can I just, Paul, the other thing, too, is just talk about, just because you were one of the first that went, the psychological training, that you have to go in... What is it, once every three years? You have to go get a test?
So we're doing it once every three years. Our certifications are once every three years. So we have to be drug tested. And then we're doing the mental health assessments every... So we're doing it with... All of our officers are broken into thirds about when we expire. So mine expires this July. And I have to have 60 hours of training plus X, Y, Z, plus I have to be drug tested in my psychological to get recertified by the Police Officer Standards and Training Council. So that's the licensing agency of police officers. I sit on the council. As a chief of police, I'm one of the members of the council. Serving my second term now, originally appointed by Governor Malloy. And so what we have done now is we've incorporated these into... Everybody has to do it prior to them expiring. So since mine expires, and I wanted to test this, I will say that, so we went for our drug testing. It didn't go so well. They lost one of the samples, so we switched providers. But, you know, this is the growth of it, right? I mean, our drug testing and police work in Farmington has been only as if we had reasonable suspicion. Now, we have an intoxicilizer, so that we can always use any time. However, for drug testing in Farmington, it's been based on if we've had... And I can say in my 12 years, we have not, we've not had any reasonable suspicion where we would have to send somebody. Now, we do have to send them every three years on a random basis. And so we're doing that. The mental health assessment, it's a one-hour interview to speak with a mental health professional. And I think most people are aware that police suicide is a huge problem. And it's been gaining more and more media attention. And so it's something that, in this police accountability bill, that was one of the things that they put in there that... And we have to use a provider who is very familiar with PTSD and has worked with police before and those sorts of things. And I think, you know, Joe Cavanaugh can tell you that I am a huge supporter of mental health and forcing officers to go even if they don't think they want to go. I had a close personal friend, police officer, commit suicide while he was working. And so that's always stayed with me. And so I've always been very concerned about the mental health because it just carries over in everything we do. So as a part of this bill, we do send officers, you know, once every three years so that they can have that conversation. We also have a very robust employee assistance program, peer support program. And I will say that we're one of the luckiest agencies because we have a detective, Joanna Bumetti, who heads our peer support. And she has her master's degree in family and child services. So she's phenomenal at what she does. And really, I just push everything to her. And I think, you know, you get a test, she does a great job at it. And so this is just one more thing that we have to do. And so let's just kind of brief on it.
Great, thank you. Chris?
Thank you, Paul. And just one of your comments, you referenced discussing or talking with other chiefs. Is there any way we can collaborate with other communities? You know, West Hartford, let's say, with the mall, and sharing some of the costs that are associated with bringing in any of these outside experts and things like that?
So I'm not sure if West Hartford would share the cost of it. We are part of a, what we call North Central Chiefs of Police. So what happens is we consolidate our, with the North Central towns, there's nine of them, Avon, Simsbury, Granby, Farmington, Canton, Suffield, Windsor Locks, Bloomfield. So what we do is we share resources. So we will, when we have a training like this, we'll open it up in that group and see if there's a way to share resources and do that. We also have a SWAT team together, our negotiators, our accident reconstruction, and those sorts of things. So we do look to consolidate where we can.
Okay, great. Other questions for the chief, Jim?
And just to note, obviously, Chris, the majority of the mall stores are in Farmington. There's only a short list of stores that...
Is there a mall?
Yeah. So the mandated trainings and the stuff, any, obviously, we talked about last time, money coming back from the state in order to provide the training for the drug testing? Are we fully absorbed at 100%?
No, there is no money for that. There was, there is a bill, just so you know, and I know, we spoke about it. So I've been testifying on some other bills. There is a bill in there to provide up to 50% for the body cameras. So if that bill was to pass, then, before it was up to 30%, right? So, but that is something new that since our... Now, it hasn't passed, so, but there is a bill. That's capital for that right now. But nothing for the rest of this that was to answer that question. Okay.
Thank you. Chief, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the concern and compassion you obviously have for your staff and for the officers under your care who take care of us. And I really, I can sense the sensitivity you have for the individuals you come in contact with on a daily basis. I think you're trying to drive that to your staff. And when you mentioned that you wanted to bring that to our community in terms of the mall, the people at the mall, that's a great idea. And I'm wondering, at this time, are there any federal or grants available to help cover the cost of those trainings? I'm sure you look into it. I'm just curious to know if there are opportunities to get grants or federal support for you to pull that off and balance our budget a little bit.
So there are no grants for that right now. What we are, so there is what we call a BURN grant that is out there for police departments. And some years, we get $8,000, some $12,000. In the last several years, we haven't gotten anything. And that is because, the long and short of it is is that we are considered a sanctuary state. And so the state has not accepted the money from the federal government to then pass through. So if we were able to get that money, and so we're hoping and we're working as the Chiefs of Police Association to get that moving again, because there are a lot of police departments affected, that we would then try and use it. But the problem is, it's not guaranteed, right? Like, so for the last several years, we have not received any of that money. And it's just been passed along to other states and others. So there's no guarantee of it. But I appreciate the comment because we will try and do that if it is afforded to us.
Great.
And you may know that one of our school resource officers was paid for by the... We applied for a grant, and for five years, they paid the full salary of that. And then we had to carry on after that. But we apply for those grants anywhere we can. Bulletproof vests, we get a grant every year for that and some other things. Traffic, sometimes there's money in traffic, and we can... Sometimes we get, you know, some of the electronic signs or those sorts of things.
I'm sure, and I know that you and the entire town staff are very vigilant about pursuing those opportunities for us. So thank you for that, and I hope you and your team stay safe out there.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks for being here, chief. It was good to see you. My question, and I'm going back to the West Farms Mall initiative there. So it sounds like there's no pushback from any of the businesses there? They're all very receptive to the program?
They were. And I thank the group, obviously, of which you're a member of, for that idea. And I didn't even want to wait until, you know, until it came out in writing. I thought it was a phenomenal idea because when you look at our arrests and those sorts of things, and then the makeup of our arrests, that was a big part of it. And so I thank you for your idea. But there was no pushback, actually, it was very welcome by the group.
That's great. And that training would include presumably all the loss prevention employees at those businesses, correct?
So most... I won't divulge who has loss prevention, who doesn't. But yes, not all stores have loss prevention, but yes.
But those that do.
Yes, those that you would, yes.
Great, thank you.
Other questions?
Okay, I'll just add, first of all, this is one instance where you've been very proactive. You had a recommendation, you ran with it, not waiting to go through the formalities, which is fantastic. And you went through a few of the other items on the list, or some of which are now part of the bill from the state that you've already been doing. So congratulations, and thank you for all of that. As far as any potential money coming out for some of the accountability bill, we did meet with some of the Farmington Valley towns this morning, and some of our legislators were there. And they said they're trying to put in some money for the record-keeping of the body cameras, which would be fantastic because you had brought that up in a previous conversation. And one of the issues that you brought up was how expensive it is when someone calls in for a Freedom of Information Act request, and you have to go through hours, days, or weeks, depending on what it is, to find that out. So I did point that out to them and said, "If you're going to help us out on that one piece, can you also add in something so if people are looking for freedom of information rather than billing the individual, that'd be tremendous help?" So thank you for that idea. And we've tried to pass it along, too, my goodness, we really did. Any other questions?
One that just came to mind. Chief, within the current, the other day, they expanded the timeframe of implementing a portion of the bill. Can you explain that and what ramifications it will have on us or not?
Yeah, so Kathy will laugh at you because she knows that I've... Since this, since the Public Act was passed, I've been working on it on behalf of the Chiefs of Police Association and the Police Officer Standards and Training Council. So I testified at length on that bill for the Judiciary Committee and was a part of, I don't want to say the negotiations, but was a part of having many, many meetings crafting what needed to change and why it needed to change. So the date got pushed off because the use of force training is changing. So the standard for when we can use force and not use force is changing. And so what we have to do at the police academy is create a whole new curriculum. So for 30 years, I've been going over case law, what our law is, federal law, on use of deadly force. Now, there's a little bit of a caveat to it. And there's some things that the state is going to require to review when you use deadly force. And so what has to happen is we have to come up with a whole new training curriculum. And as post-recertified, use of force instructors. So those instructors, now, we have, we're... We have a working group that is developing a policy, and I'm working with that working group. And then we have another working group that is the instructors, who are then going to have to put together a whole new instruction. When this bill passes, and I have all hopes that it will pass soon, is those two things will then be finalized. And we will then, it'll take probably a couple months to get the final curriculum out. And then, once that happens, all officers then have to be trained on it. But it's not as simple as having a classroom. You've seen that Milo, we talked about it last time, right? There's going to be a requirement that there's hands-on training, either it be simunitions, Milo machines, because de-escalation now is required. We all trained de-escalation before this. We all, I mean, that has been a part of everything we do. If we can, we always want to talk things down, right? It's, you know, that's the safest thing for all of us. Now, it's a requirement, so we really have to, really have a focus on that. And so that bill changed a couple things. I will tell you, probably one of the most important things was, and this is one that I fought on, and I told them that, our training would be, if you had a school shooting, that our training would then have to be, everybody waits outside. So kind of like the Free Column Mine, right, or a mall? Because we were not allowed to use deadly force if you put anybody else's life in jeopardy. If you shoot a bullet, that bullet will go blocks. Think about being in a school, in a mall of an active shooter event, and having somebody shooting, and people running, and all of a sudden, if you're going to take action there, if you put anybody else's life in harm, you were not, that was going to be held against you, and it was not justifiable. So that had a chilling effect of, what do we tell our officers? And I, as a chief, I mean, I, they can be criminally liable for going and trying to stop that. And so that was changed. And so all that we had to do was add the word unreasonable so that we didn't put them in unreasonable harm's way. So anyway, that was a big part of that bill and probably one of the most important. Because anytime you use deadly force, it's obviously split-second. Most of the time, 99.9%, there's no planning for it. It's reactionary, it's quick, and, you know, to be held criminally liable for your split-second decision in that case would have been... I think that, you know, the citizens of Connecticut would not have been served well by that. And so all the, on every side, whether the Democrats or the Republicans, all recognize that, and so they were willing to do. And so we've been working since the summer on changing some of that language. And so that's a big part of that bill.
Thanks, chief.
Probably more than what you wanted, but it's been, it's been my life's work since this bill passed, right?
And Paul, wouldn't you be, I mean, it's fair to say that with your involvement and with the legislators and things, that it's been pretty collaborative of working all together at this point to try to really get a bill that everyone can accept and buy into, correct?
Yes.
And we're lucky to have Paul at the forefront of it so we are, you know, we know what's going on and, you know, what's the ramifications of different things. So we do appreciate all your work. Because you have been spending a lot of time doing it, that's for sure.
I've dealt with a very unusual year anyway, where all of the other things are going on. And I think one of the things you did early on in when the vaccines were coming out is you got your people vaccinated early, which was tremendous because it wasn't always with the assistance of the state directing you there. So thank you for that, too. Is there no other questions? I think we're good.
Peter, it's TA on page 31 through 41. Police Department question?
Good. I make a motion to tentatively approve pages 31 through 41 of the police department's budget. Joe Cavanaugh, second.
Motion in a second. Any further questions, discussion, any on, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, chief.
And I think we have Nancy Perrin coming. I think she's... She's in the building.
Nancy is in.
We see Nancy on the way out. Thank you. No. Thank you. We're going to be on page 55, the orange tab. Mustard.
Which tab is that?
It's there, mustard, page 55.
Oh, I have to say mustard.
Mustard or orange?
Orange is a desert.
Everyone knows Nancy Perrin. She's the Director of Community and Recreational Services. Welcome, Nancy. You're early for our budget meeting.
I know, obviously, it's a midnight one.
So Community and Recreational Services starts on page 55. And this group of accounts includes community services and housing. The one thing that I, it's a relatively flat account, except one thing that I would mention is that the program clerk position at the senior center is recommended to be fully funded. Due to budget constraints, last year, the position was only funded for half a year. So that's a person at the senior center. We have not brought that person in for this part of the half of the year because the senior center has been closed. We are looking to bring someone in relatively soon. The seniors, as they're getting vaccinated, are very hot and heavy to come back to the senior center. And I don't know if anyone has been familiar with the senior centers throughout COVID, but Nancy and her crew has done a spectacular job during COVID for the seniors. They play pickleball outside. There was, I don't know if you saw us, like, if you drove by, it was all set up. And Nancy and them, they're moving chairs, setting things up, and more people are coming in, and more people are coming out. And really, I think, all the seniors have been really good troopers, and they've been very creative about different things to do. And so Andrea, who is the director over there, is very much pushing for us to get another program clerk over there. And we have it funded for the full year. But we are looking to bring her or him in relatively soon because it is busy even right now doing programs. So Nancy, was there anything really in the senior center or anything that you'd like us, I mean, maybe to talk about a little bit about some of your efforts with COVID and the vaccines and things that are going on? Just because I think they have an interest in that.
Absolutely. And as far as the senior center person, too, with COVID, it does take a lot more time to check people into the senior center and get them going, you know, checking the temperatures and set up take-downs, cleaning in-between. So, you know, that extra person there would be a huge help. But as far as for vaccines, what we decided to do early on when they started offering us the vaccines is we got a team of people together to actually reach out to all the seniors to help make the vaccine appointment. So we've made, the last time I looked, I think it was like 1,900 phone calls to get people registered and signed up. We had a few seniors that have email, and we've sent them email instructions. But by and large, a lot of, especially the older ones, don't have that email address. So we've actually, at one given time, I think I've had, you know, 10 computers set up of refreshing on VMS to get people appointments and things, so.
And even before the appointments, just throughout, just maybe give a little, if I don't know, they've seen... And even before the appointments, just throughout, just maybe give a little, if I don't know, they've seen you really, about just the whole thing with COVID and mental health and your office, and how busy it's been and how it's functioning.
Yeah, we've been working with a lot of people with financial assistance and getting people, you know, on programs that can assist them, helping people with some of the orders as far as evictions and things of that nature. We've been helping people file the appropriate paperwork and get themselves settled there. And then, as far as counseling, you know, we've seen such an increase in anxiety, primarily in teens and kids, that, mostly teenagers and younger adults that we've been working with, but a lot of the older folks, too. And again, we have so many great volunteers that have assisted us. We actually, when everything shut down, we got a team together and started calling people and checking in with them regularly, doing on-the-phone counseling and things of that nature. We were creative, we've done a few programs on the radio to be able to reach out to folks that don't have the email addresses. So everybody's been really busy, it's different, but, and, you know, with Dial-A-Ride, we're getting people where they need to be, but it's one person on the van at a time. You know, so everything just takes a little bit longer, you know, we have to sanitize in between things. And, you know, but we've kept it running, and everybody's done a really good job, too.
And if you have any questions for Nancy?
Questions for Nancy? Hi, that one.
Joe.
Thank you, Nancy. You said you're helping seniors, how about any help for the disabled, for lining them up for shots or anything?
Absolutely, when it's there, when people fit the criteria to be helped, we absolutely will help anybody and everybody. Do you think to something recently at New Horizons, too? No, we're actually coordinating a clinic at New Horizons, potentially one or two of the other retirement communities as well.
Awesome. And I know you said about the teams with having some crisis, and I know, yes, at the board events, the same thing. Are you working in conjunction with schools in order to piggyback off each other?
Yep, we work together, and with a lot of our, we call family with service needs, a lot of those families come before us through the JRB and things of that nature. So we work together very closely, actually.
Okay. And my last one is for Section 8, with the rent relief and everything, as we're having issues. Would people not be able to pay, is Section 8 still funding people on those accounts to pay their rent? Or did that all come to a halt with COVID?
No, Section 8 is actually a federal program that actually pays rents for people that qualify. We do receive some FEMA money to help people, as what you're talking about with evictions. And anybody that has needed assistance and qualified, we've been able to assist. But because of the stop with the eviction, we haven't had the tipping to some of that money yet, but I anticipate we won't be.
Thank you. Other questions for Nancy?
Yeah, I have one question for Nancy. Thank you very much for everything that you're doing, especially for our seniors. My dad appreciates the calls. But my question is on the Stone House.
Okay.
We were there a year ago, looking at, there's a lot of potential there. Have you given, is there any more solid thoughts about what we want to put in there, how it could be used?
Yeah, there's actually a lot of thought. There is some funds, I don't know what's happened with the capital, but there is some funds with the capital that we've been making to work together, to get some things done. Especially that Port area, we just make, I think that, we all live in that area. But that's in the, there is some funds in the capital for that.
So, what would, how would that kind of be open to the public? What were you thinking of you doing that, doing there?
Well, at this point, no real decision has been made because of the fact that we've got it, there's quite a good, there's three different phases.
Because it's beautiful.
It is a beautiful building, it's one of my favorites, actually.
No, I look forward to seeing that.
Yeah, me, too.
I think Brian's going to max lobby for our council meeting to have, in part with fire.
That is a brilliant idea. You're glad you have it, right? Any other questions for Nancy?
Okay. Before you go on, Nancy, first of all, I want to thank you for, throughout the year, all the work that you've done, which is, as with everyone, a very different year. You've been incredibly creative throughout it. You know, the outdoor activities, the concerts, the vaccines have been fantastic. When I look at the numbers recently, as far as our seniors vaccination versus statewide, I think our 75 and above is pushing 90%. So those calls are obviously having good effect. And 65 and above is at least in the mid-70s last time I checked. So 1,900 calls have brought in a lot of people to be vaccinated, so thank you for all that. And we will be talking about, when we're talking about capital, this could be the Stone House, but that's a conversation we'll have later. But it's a great building, beautiful building, I like the old ones.
And you did a good job with the holiday funds for Christmas and.
Yeah, we had a really nice spokesperson, too.
Right, she had a mind, but he did all right.
One of the things I did want to point out, and we talked about it last year, but with Nancy and Joe, we had decided to take over the Dial-A-Ride program. It's in-house now, and it's been, we've saved a considerable amount of money, and it's been going very well. So that was a good move. And I will admit, I was a little bit hesitant about doing it, because it just seems like it's very complicated with all the different drivers and the vans and how it works. But Nancy and her crew, they did take it on, and we, I think we saved about $20,000 in the budget for taking it on, about doing it in-house, and so.
One thing I didn't mention is, because we're doing it in-house, we can make appointments for things. And we made it a commitment that anybody that had a vaccine appointment, as long as it was in the greater Hartford area, we were going to bring them there. So, you know, we've been able to squeeze people that normally wouldn't use the Dial-A-Ride, and to be able to get their vaccine, so we've thought about that.
Right. It was very creative. So Nancy has some other accounts, but this is Community and Recreation, and Peter, it's pages 55 through 65.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve, tentatively approve pages 55 through 55.
Joe, Captain Carroll, second.
I'm motioning second. Any further comment? Any, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Foesed. Motion passed, unanimous.
Nancy also has the Red Tab and Blue Tab, which is the Recreation Fund and the Westwood Golf Course. And that's on, what is it, page 72 we start on, and that's the Recreation Fund. As you remember, in the back of the book, 72, yeah. And on that first page is the sheet where it shows the recreation programs, and it shows the revenues, and it shows the appropriations. As you probably remember, that this is outside the budget, and then we also have recreation inside the budget, which is in the budget book. But this is, we collect in the revenues and we, the appropriations. And Nancy, maybe you just want to just quickly go through, what are some of the programs? It is a balanced budget, we, as you can see, it was 621,711 revenues, and the appropriations are the same. And we, you know, we run different programs, and we expect to collect money from them. Not all programs make money, but are intended to, you know, balance the budget by the end.
And so this includes our sports and physical fitness, so all our team sports, individual sports, all of those activities. The bus trips, our recreation camps, which we were able to do last summer. And we expect that it will look similar, or maybe even a little bit more folks for this summer. And we have all different types of camps, from a playground camp to sports camps. And we also do some team adventure camps, which are probably our most popular. I always say, when you have 16, 17-year-olds driving themselves to camp each day, you must be doing something right. So, you know, we have all those types of activities, as well as senior trips and programs that, you know, that we collect lots of support, people to provide that. So that's all included in this recreation budget.
Questions regarding the recreation budget?
Just one quick question, on the revenue side. Are you, do you have any anticipation of numbers going up, or maintaining, or going down due to COVID? As we, you know, go to the long tail of COVID?
Well, last summer, we were actually, we could only offer the camp to so many spots, and we actually filled every single camp, except for our first one. I think people kind of wanted to see how it went before they signed up. We're already filling a good deal of them. We're hoping we're going to be able to open up a few more for over the summer, because I think people really do want to get out and do, you know, have their kids to step outside.
Great.
And Brian, obviously, when they weren't running as many crow wings, we weren't spending as much money. So it's kind of balanced out. But I would say that, you know, if you look at the revenues on that page 72, you'll notice that, you know, what we've collected is much less than what we thought we were going to collect. But we haven't been spending the money either, so it's kind of on both sides.
Yeah, I think we lost, I think, four weeks of camp over the summer, because we had to keep waiting till we could start it. I think we were able to start it, and last week was the first week, right before July 1st. So, and normally, we'll start right in school, and so we had a few weeks where we couldn't offer the camp.
And Nancy was very involved with the health district and the recreation people, and with other communities, too, about what the guidelines would be, and again, being really, really creative about how to do different things, and being able to run the programs. And we got a lot of very good reviews for the camps and the different things, because they were doing it, you know, so creatively, and wanted everyone, you know, a lot of people, because it was safe, they really were interested in having their kids come to different things, so.
Yeah, the staff just, you know, these are college students, and they just did a fantastic job. We were really very, very proud of them. They followed all the guidelines, they took it very seriously, because they wanted it to go well, too.
Thank you for that.
So I don't know if you have any questions on the Recreation Fund?
Any other questions on Recreation Fund?
And certainly pass our thanks, Paul, and the staff, that we did do a great job on top of you.
I certainly love, I'm lucky to hear that. And Peter, that would be pages 72 through 79.
I make a motion that we tentatively approve pages 72 through 79. Joe, Captain Carroll, second.
I'm motioning second. Any further discussion? Any, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Foesed. Motion passed, unanimous.
The next one would be the Westwood Golf Course, and this is the recreation side, but not the maintenance side. And that is on page 8, the Blue Tab in the back. So the Westwood Golf Course has been doing spectacular. So that's something that we're very excited about. And if you all remember, it's probably golf courses were one of the first things that were able to be opened up when COVID after April and May, right? And we opened up our golf course very soon and followed all the guidelines. And people, I think, all over the place are playing golf, but especially at Westwood. And it's really seen, I think, a lot of new people that have never played golf before. And we're hoping that that continues into the next season. And we're hoping that there's not a lot of snow, so we're going to open it up as early as we can. Unfortunately, Westwood is a very wet golf course, so it's sometimes harder to open it up really early. But I did see today, I noticed that some of the people were playing around the last of the snowbank. So we're going to look to open the golf course up. And one of the things that we're doing over there is that, because the golf course has been doing so well, we have a good restaurant person there, and the restaurant really needed some work to make it more successful. And now that so many people are up there, it really, we want it to be a destination. So they're doing work up there now to improve the kitchen in the area. And I, correct me, Nancy or Joe, are they doing the outside deck, or is that the next stage?
That'll be the next stage, that'll come, once they finish up the kitchen area. So that'll probably be the June-July timeframe.
Right, and so I don't know if Nancy are golfers, but one of the things, the outside deck, it's really very, very pretty out there, but it needs, it needs work. And so we're hoping that people will still come and play golf, and we'll have it, have a, since we have a very good restaurant and a good person there, that they can eat at the restaurant and sit outside. So we're pleased with how well the golf course has been going. And so we are obviously on that page, on page 80, the revenues and the appropriations. And you can see our green fees, our season tickets, and then the appropriations. And we are putting to balance our budget, you know, 636,850 is our estimated revenue, and then that would be our appropriations. So, and if you remember that, how it works with the golf course is that we pay, a portion of the golf course is paid, we pay in the general fund, I mean, it's the general fund, right, Joe?
That's correct, yeah.
General fund, and that's on the first page. When we go through the revenues, you'll see the percentage of the golf course paid back to the town. And they were able to meet that obligation to us, so that's good news, too, on the revenue side.
And not always the case.
Not always the case, but they've been doing well, they've been doing well to meet their, that obligation. But, and we are, we have, it's a nice group of, a foreman, a foreman, and our pro has been there for quite some time, too. So it's been working out really well.
Questions regarding Westwood?
I have one question.
Yes.
The Pavilion, any chance to open that up to host the golf tournaments and stuff again, because of COVID? Do you utilize that?
Yeah, and we actually were able to do a little bit last year, too, just to, you know, COVID saves. But we actually did have quite a few things going on there as well.
Great.
Good question for Nancy on Westwood.
It was very nice to see all the people out there early, being one of the few spots. I drove by there a number of times, and everyone following the rules, keeping their distance, but getting out in the line one per car, but we worked that great, so did a great job with that.
Yeah, thank you. And Joe, is that all for Nancy? I think you should just disable the house, leave the pop-up. Yeah, I did that, yeah, right. I think that's it.
Technically, we did that last night, right, through the general government.
Yeah. So that's it for Nancy.
Okay. Nancy, thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next will be Fire and Rescue Services, this will be Steve Hoffman.
Captain, do we need to approve those pages?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Eighty?
Eighty to eighty-three, Peter, I'm sorry.
I make a motion to tentatively approve pages eighty through eighty-three, second.
I'm motioning second. Any further discussion? Any, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Foesed. Motion passed, unanimous.
Fire and Rescue Services, it's with the gray account, in Public Safety, and it's page 27. Hi, Steve. Good, how you doing? Everyone knows Steve Hoffman, our Director of Fire and Rescue Services.
Good evening, you're welcome.
How are you tonight, or tonight?
Good. Because we're inside.
So the fire department budget is very flat. It's at a 0.75, 0.76, 0.76% increase. Again, there's no salaries, except for step increases in the budget. Let me just see if we can touch on some different things. Really very flat. As you know, we have nine paid firefighters, and they complement our volunteer force of firefighters. They've been doing an excellent job, the firefighters and volunteers during our COVID. And so that's been something that we've been very grateful for, that, you know, they were our first responders out, and especially at the very beginning, so they've done excellent work. Steve, is there anything maybe that you could touch on, on the overall philosophy, or what's going on? It's pretty, pretty much that as well.
I guess for this year, the paper grant is on its last year, so it's a 3565 for the third year of the paper grant. So 35 the feds are paying, and then 65 for response for that ninth firefighter, so it's the last year of paper grant. And also this year, the training facility is coming up, I have a five-year inspection for NFPA 1403. So the fire facilities, who put up the training power, is going to have to come in. And it's a cost share with AGON, if you share that story with AGON, you're not going to be due any money.
That's fine, you know?
Yeah. Hard to believe, yeah.
And it's still used quite a bit?
A lot, yes. We do a lot of fire training here, we've actually started to do internal state certification courses. So in 2019, we did a firefighter two class in-house with our own instructors. We were going to do it in 2020 as well, but obviously the pandemic wouldn't allow us to do that. So we're planning for that in 2021. And doing it helps us save us money, it allows our instructors to utilize their skills and, you know, abilities that they've learned through state courses and going outside. So we obviously use that training facility a lot, also for the annual requirements for OSHA.
And Steve, maybe you just want to talk about, one of the things, I think we've mentioned in the past, I'm not sure with this council, but, you know, with our calls for service, how many calls for service the volunteers go on? It's quite, it's an extensive amount. And one of the things we've been working on, or Steve has been working on, with our doctor.
Like Dr. Damon?
Yeah, with medical control.
Medical control.
About some of the calls that, potentially, that our volunteers do not have to go on, because it really burns the volunteers out. And they've been working with the medical control officer to kind of limit some of those calls. And I don't know if you remember, we've talked about it before in the past, but some of the elderly housing, where they should really have had their own person on staff, instead of our volunteers having to go out and do these types of calls. And so we have, Steve has been working and working with the chiefs. Again, because the volunteers now, these days, there's a tremendous amount of training that they have. Again, because the volunteers now, these days, there's a tremendous amount of training that they have to go through. It's really a very extensive being a volunteer. It's a lot of work. And so going out on some of these calls in the middle of the night, and we're trying to cut back on some of that so there's not some burnout. And Steve has been working on some different things in a kind of very measured and slow approach. But I think that we've seen some success with that of call, like some less calls for service where we really, it wasn't really appropriate for the volunteer to go out anyway.
So we started with cutting, and obviously this is a discussion with us, the police department as our supplemental first responder, AMR as our contracted ALS provider, and they also hold a PSA for the BLS in town. So it was a communications between all of us and our medical control with Dr. Kamen. And we started off slow at the beginning of two thousand nineteen with limiting response to assisted living in senior housing depending on certain parameters that they met. That worked out pretty well. It cut the call volume a little bit. It was for non-priority calls. Obviously, we're still going for the cardiac arrest and the high priority emergency call. Most recently, we reevaluated that. All the groups got together. We were in agreement. We went through the whole process of the different calls that we responded to. And there were some additional non-emergency calls. We call them alpha calls and Charlie calls that we felt as a group that the fire department really didn't need to respond to. We have the availability of two ALS ambulances in town now, twenty-four seven with AMR. So we took a little bit of that screen off our volunteer firefighter force for those non-priority calls. And so far, we've seen a reduction so far in call volume. So it takes a little bit less off of them, especially in the middle of the night, waking up at three in the morning. So they're really more going to those high priority emergency calls.
And then one of the things that you saw in the capital budget that we really, and it's in your strategic plan and we've talked about, is that we really have to think about what we're going to do with the building. They, you know, and have a building committee, and we have some money, startup money in the capital that's still there. But that's another, something that the chiefs are very interested in, and what we're going to do with the buildings. And we've been holding off on the real large, large repairs that have to be done, waiting to see, you know, once we start talking about what, what needs to be done in each one of these buildings. So it's something that's on the docket in the future. I don't know if you have any questions for the fire department?
Good. Steve, good to see you. My question is, kind of going back to the calls. I'm just curious, like, the number of calls, both medical related and fire related during the pandemic, have we seen a shift upward down in those, in those types of calls?
At the beginning of the pandemic, we saw a decrease. And I think that was fear because people didn't want to go to the hospital. Over time, we saw an increase. We're pretty much, as we started to get a little better sort of into the summer, towards the end of the summer, call line went back up as we started to, you know, with those numbers started to rise. People got nervous again. Those calls came down a little bit, but they didn't come back down as drastically as they did in the beginning. So right now, they are starting to rise, and obviously those calls for service are increasing. However, with these reductions that we've made so far with the non-priority calls, it has helped a little bit with putting that straight on the volunteers.
That's great. Thank you.
Other questions for Steve?
I'll throw one out there. Just looking at technical equipment, it's down pretty significantly from your staff. And that, what, what do the departments plan on purchasing this year in terms of upgrading or new technologies?
Steve, what page do you have?
Thirty.
Airbags, so our airbags have reached their shelf life, so we have to replace those. All the, all the one, one of the airbags on engine ten at East Barnes needs to be replaced. We're also looking for an extrication support strut system for tungst, for their rescue. Some of that money is allocated to the Lucas devices that we approved previously. We spaced that, cost that over a couple of years of final payment and a capital plan. And then we're trying to replace some LED lighting. Right now, our portable hand lights are the old halogen lights. We're trying to switch some of that to LED with more technology. And we're also trying to do some computer upgrades at the substations, so at Southwest and Open Gardens, because it is used and be able, have availability to the network for training and access to firehouse software and things like that on the, on the substations.
Okay. That's good stuff. How about in years past, though, we thought of repair and maintenance? That was always a big burn on the, on the budget. How is the equipment holding up? What do you look, what's it look like for the future?
The apparatus this year did very well. We haven't really seen any increased costs or requests for repairs. Most of it's all been the usual annual and biannual inspections that we do on the apparatus. And we haven't had any major issues with any equipment. I have it stated, I think, in the capital presentation, we're in the process with an extrication committee looking to standardize the battery-powered extrication equipment across town. So a committee is together now working on that, looking at all the different models and masons to see what's going to be best for the community.
Excellent. Thanks, Steve.
Other questions for Steve?
I'll jump on one.
Go ahead.
Just back to the truck again, the medical you want to replace? Any thought about going to a fifteen-year since it's so low mileage and such a low rate of return? We do sell for like five thousand dollars just to keep them running if they're still in working condition? I'm sure they are.
Yes, that's definitely something we've discussed with the chiefs. Most of our larger apparatus are twenty to twenty-five years, but we could definitely look to push to ten to fifteen.
Yeah, this, this shook, this took me by surprise to be at five thousand dollar price tag to get that back to somebody else where it's such a low mileage, you'd think would demand a higher price.
And I believe we sold it, I believe we sold it to a department in Tennessee.
Just sort of, I don't necessarily disagree, but it also has to do with, I think that it just has a ton of wear and tear on it. It's just, they're just not in that great a shape. That's why they're not getting that much money. But I think that working at potentially as a fifteen-year makes some sense.
Eighty percent of the call volume in town is medical calls. So obviously, a huge chunk of the calls, you respond to with those little medical trucks. In years past, they went to smaller medical trucks because the amount of blood you're going through has taken a beating on those larger apparatus, not reducing, you know, the small pickup trucks responding to those medical calls.
And obviously, now with the Lucas devices, we still have enough room on those, on those medics to get them on there?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Just clarifying on the medic, on the medical apparatus, I, I thought they were ten years, but I'm, I'm really stretching here. They're fifteen on those units?
No, we have a ten-year.
Yeah, ten years.
He was requesting to look at doing it as a fifteen-year, or pushing that out?
Whatever.
I don't know.
As someone who's done, that's, I think for those of us who are not watching the wear and tear that goes through, the mileage doesn't tell the whole story. It's not, you know, going to church on Sunday, it's not. So you put in some work. Let me ask you a question on volunteers and how you're doing. Historically, you've done a great job of bringing in volunteers. You've got a great group there who has responded incredibly well during, during COVID. How are you looking for recruitment going forward?
Well, honestly, pandemic kind of hit us hard because we can't go out and necessarily actively recruit. We did try to pull a recruitment drive. It was extremely low attendance. We found that word of mouth seems to be the best. We've been pushing it out on social media. And that's pretty much what we've been doing predominantly. We've also looked up at this state through their line as far as recruitment. We do have a recruiter retention. We're trying to put together some videos for recruitment retention that we can post online. We're also looking to potentially involve the news in some type of facet that way. But obviously, going out and having functions historically show a low turnout. And obviously, during the pandemic, we really have to do them.
But I think, Steve, it would be fair to say with, with the workload that's involved with the volunteers and things like that, that there is a little bit of a concern about the volunteers, you know, volunteers. I think for volunteers, I don't, not just Washington, I just think everywhere. And really, it's a nice plug right now if anyone, if anyone that wants to be a volunteer, we are always looking for volunteers. But it's, it's a lot of work. And I know that the, the committee that we just created is going to be looking at some more of the tax relief and some different things for the volunteers too. But it is, we're very creative here. We have, you know, we have volunteers, we have full-time people, we have part-time people that are on too, just so we can, you know, we have a very intricate system here. But we are always looking for volunteers. And the chiefs do a really great job of making sure, like, at night, that they have people on call, like volunteers, so that we can have the coverage that we, that we need.
There's a clear national decline, but we're doing pretty well maintaining our staffing. And like Kathy said, the chiefs have a rotation. They have officers at night members that sign up for shifts to ensure coverage all the time. So we've got a good system to try to equal the load out of all the memberships.
Fantastic. Appreciate it. Any final questions?
You did a good job.
Did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Peter, we just need a TA from twenty-seven to thirty.
I make a motion to tentatively approve pages twenty-seven through thirty. Joe, Kevin, Earl, Senator.
We have a motion to second. Any further questions? Is there any done? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed and ended.
Everyone knows Rose Ponte, our Economic Development Director. And she is on page fourteen. And she's part of the general administration that we went through yesterday. But I always like to have Rose come in and give an update with economic development. And Rose, why don't you kind of give a little history like you usually do? Because I think that's a great way to start.
Very good. So about almost a year ago to the date, I looked at the calendar. I came before you guys and I talked very confidently, oh, you already took it off? I didn't know it was possible. So I talked very confidently on the stability of our local economy, and I predicted prosperity and growth in two thousand twenty. And boy, did our life get upended just a few days after that. But when I look back on it, and although life as we knew it dramatically changed, I think that our town's fiscal responsible policy, built on that foundation of smart growth and conservative spending and stable revenues, really got us to weather this storm. And as we look at two thousand twenty-one and beyond, I think we might have some persistent challenges that we all have to face. But I think those same policies are really, will get us through all those challenges as well. As you know, over the past number of years, the Economic Development Department really started to focus on increasing connections between our residents and town services and increasing connections with our businesses. And we also started having a big focus on having timely, trustworthy communication. And as you guys know, we did the Explore Farmington website. And that foundation really came in handy when the world kind of upended. All of a sudden, we were faced with so many changes. And I remember it was a Saturday, and I thought, how am I going to communicate all this? Not only to the businesses, but what the businesses need to be communicated to the community. And so I called our website designer. And over that weekend, we worked to transform the Explore Farmington website to really be a COVID response and recovery site. And that was fantastic because it allowed the businesses to upload all these changes that were coming. Some of them were closed. Some of them had just needed to start an online web store, which they had never done. Some, all of a sudden, were talking about curbs like a pickup, words that we never really even heard before. But now they had a website that they can upload all these changes almost immediately. Our residents then had a website that was telling them all the different things they could do for their safety guidelines and what restrictions might, might be going on. And again, that trustworthy communication was imperative to just keep everybody calm. But that website not only allowed us to increase those connections and be that voice, it also allowed us to have a sense of community. It allowed us to, all of a sudden, while we were all socially distancing, still feeling connected. We celebrated our heroes. We talked about ringing of the bells. We really, all of a sudden, started seeing ourselves that we were able to comfort each other. And that trustworthiness in a sense of chaos really allowed everyone to kind of take a breath and move and take that step forward. So all those communication vehicles really increased over the past year. Believe it or not, we had, we sent out a hundred emails, and we had a thirty-one percent open rate, which translates into thirty-nine thousand seventy-three emails that were open and read. And there were five thousand two hundred and eighty-four clicks, which means that people clicked on to what the businesses were promoting. Daily, we saw engagement rise, not only on our Facebook account, on our Instagram accounts. And we even, this year, established a Explore Farmington Twitter account. So all those, all those communication things were great, but they were actually recognized by Ion Bank. And they contacted me and they said, you know, we think this is so important, the work they're doing, that we want to sponsor future initiatives like this. So it was very rewarding to just see the fruits of that labor, to see a communicate, a community that was better communicated and connected. So what's the result of all of that? I really believe it allowed us to continue to weather that storm. And I always like to report Farmington is the economic leader in the Hartford region. But I don't feel confident to say one unless I have numbers that back it up. And this year again, out of the twenty-eight towns in the metro Hartford region, Farmington still has one of the lowest mil rates. We are behind Heartland, which, which has a mil rate of twenty-seven point five, and Windsor last with a mil rate of twenty-five point eight-three. Our rent this again grew, and our commercial base grew to thirty-three point two percent of the total taxes, leaving sixty-seven point eight percent for residential. And that still is such a great ratio because the entire tax burden does not fall on our residents. The current unemployment rate, at this time last year, was in the low two when I reported to you. Now it's at five point four percent. Again, another indication that the pandemic has had an effect even on our residents. But when you compare it to the unemployment rate in the state of Connecticut at seven point five, we are still faring better than, you know, a lot of other places in Connecticut. For us, we have four point four million square feet of office space. And of that office space, five point three percent is currently vacant, which is not bad at all. Some of those challenges that I look at in the future, what's going to happen? Are we going to have, continue to have remote workers? Is it going to be a hybrid approach? Are, are bigger companies going to look to keep their space because some people are going to be socially distancing? Or are they going to be, when their leave is come up, having to make other decisions? Those are some of the things that, you know, I worry about. And I'm always looking, what type of policies do we need to implement to address these types of new changes that may be coming? We have two point one million square feet of industrial space. And I have to say, we only have point two percent vacancy. All our manufacturers are doing well and the doors are wide open. So looking into the future, as we, you know, really prepare to really reopen our economy, and it looks like that's really going to happen, we still have to be flexible and be willing to adapt to this new normal. We're going to continue to communicate that information and engage our community. That's going to be a component piece of our success. And by saying adaptable and flexible, what do we have to do to think outside of the box? What do we have to do to keep that mil rate low? And what hard-earned lessons have we learned over the twelve, last twelve months? And our companies have learned over the twelve months. And those lessons maybe will make them more innovative, more efficient, and actually stronger. So that's what I'm hoping to do next year, is to just continue to help our businesses as they force this new normal and successfully resume all their operations. My budget pretty much is all tied to the goals and all tied to a lot of the activities that I just talked about. So if anybody has any questions, they fire away.
But maybe, Rose, before you ask questions, I have a couple of other things that I think are interesting. It's like you said, when you, when working with the businesses, and especially working with the building department, about the outdoor dining and the, and the, what do you call them, the bubbles?
Yes, our igloos.
The igloos. And Rose really worked hard with our building department and planning department. And again, just trying to be so flexible and they, you know, any business that would call and just trying to have some level of common sense and trying to just help the businesses the best they could and just with an attitude of if we can make it work, we're going to make it work for you. And then, I don't know if you all remember, but they had this, the whole bubble issue where they thought that the bubbles were okay. And then all of a sudden, the bubbles weren't okay. And we had all these businesses that had bubbles, and they were all calling Rose up with the bubbles. So then we had to, they changed that, and now the bubbles were a lot better.
The igloos were allowed.
But again, remaining that, you know, flexible.
A great example is this past Monday, many of you might have heard that Lord &amp; Taylor's went out of business in the mall. So here we have a hundred thousand square feet. And Lord &amp; Taylor's approached the town and said, you know, we have to go to town planning and zoning because we would like to allow medical offices there. And that really was very important for us, to be able to address that and say, okay, do we want to be empty building? Or do we want to address it and make sure safeguards are in place? And that was passed just this past Monday. So those are the types of things, as Kathy mentioned, making sure that we made, you know, we still need to have a process in place to make sure that the outdoor dining was going to be done safely and that buffers were in place and that things were going to be done correctly. But we did it efficiently, quickly, and it's worked out rather well for everyone.
Questions for Rose?
Hi, Rose. First of all, I just want to thank you for all your hard work during the pandemic and every year you put in so much heart and work. I'm very grateful for that. Helping businesses, you know, find different resources and grants and everything you said with the Explore Farmington webpage. I think that was great how you made that into a COVID response page this year. And all the other things you've done to help promote local businesses, to encourage us to shop local and inspire our business owner, is kind of very important. My question is, I saw recently, I read recently that Metro Realty purchased the old UAW building near Yukon. And I was wondering, have you heard anything yet? Are they planning on keeping the existing building or demolishing that and building a new medical office type of building? And that would be in the floating zone, right?
Yes, that could be in the innovation floating zone. So when we talk about, I like to call it our bioscience medical innovation strong area. It's a very, you know, in terms of, I think it's a total of like three miles, but boy, is there a lot of things going on over there. And I know that Metro Realty has always tried to think of cutting edge. And I know they're very interested in continuing the success of the bioscience and life sciences. And so in fact, Jeff Sager and I are connecting with Sho Islam, who is the new Bioscience Business Development Director for Advanced CT. Advanced CT is really D C B's attraction arm. And what they're trying to do is continue this bioscience cluster in all of the states. And so Longham Haven has a very thriving bioscience cluster. We do too. And so we have to make sure that we have the necessary building capacity. So when one of these bioscience companies perhaps comes internationally or comes from down south, that we have the lab space or the office space or whatever they need to relocate to Farmington hopefully. And so that's why I think Metro is understanding this whole area and the importance of it. And when I've spoken to them, that's always been their goal. So while I don't know specifically what their plans are for that building, that only became public, I think, a day or so ago, I continually work with them and we're going to be connecting with Sho, I think, next week. And I'm sure that will come up.
That's great. Thanks, Rose. I got one too.
Hi, Rose. Speaking of that whole area up there, during COVID, did they see a rise in hiring people up that way for the research and what Jackson Labs was participating in? I don't know all the details, but doing research or whatever on vaccines and stuff, was there an increase in investment up there? And did they expand or have to take more office space? Or did any of these smaller companies, did they grow through this pandemic?
Yeah, there's been quite a bit of research done. And there's been quite a bit of grant money earned by UConn Health and also by Jackson Labs and by the TIP program. And a lot of that research grant money is coming to fund things like this. The best example I can, you know, kind of brag about is Jackson Labs. So Jackson Labs, they really immediately went into action and partnered with the governor and very early on did a press conference right in Farmington. And what they were able to do was incredible. They did have to increase staff. And they went from, I think, in the very beginning, it was less than a hundred COVID tests a day, to having the capacity to do several thousand, maybe fifteen thousand tests a day. I know myself, a couple of times, you know, you feel like you have a little symptom of something and you're able to go to Yukon Health, get a COVID test at eight in the morning and have the results by that afternoon. And that's because it's right there at Jackson Labs. So all of that, they did have to, they had to quickly add on to their lab, not in terms of, you know, structure, but they had to rearrange. They had to add more personnel and they were able to make that capacity. And I think one of the, the biggest assets of having someone like Jackson Labs and having this medical office campus and having these researchers, in a time like this and public health is so important, right in our own backyard, we had capacity, oh, thank you, Kathy, we had capacity that a lot of other towns didn't. We didn't only have the Yukon Health able to do COVID testing, but even Pro Health went into the old women's plaza instead of COVID testing there. And then we also had COVID testing by Griffin Hospital over at Tuncsus. So while loads and loads of people were scrambling how to always get a test, right in our town, we had that capability. I think that's one, not only is it a very thriving corridor, but it really, the type of research that's being done affects our lives each and every day.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Rose.
Any questions for Rose?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Rose. And what an acknowledgement from ION Bank to really support what you're doing over there with Explore Farmington. So thank you. Like you said, we don't know what's really going to go on with the office space if people come back, if there's no downsides, but obviously we retained really well for industrial space.
Yes.
Is there more room for growth for industrial? Are we at our limit?
Well, right now, we're at our limit. And I, I'm a big believer in redevelopment. And so there are some buildings that I would imagine, you know, that are maybe not being used to their highest and best use. Some manufacturers have started talking about doing some additions to their buildings, but we really are at capacity. You might have read a couple of months ago that Connecticut's spring stamping needed to expand and they ended up going to a second building, I believe in Subington. So we really are at capacity. But I think the way to grow is really going to be, you know, redevelopment of some of the buildings and having them speak bigger uses. But as of right now, we, as I said, we only are at point two percent vacancy.
So we'll probably be seeing these buildings that obviously are in industrial zones and don't have to go through EDC and stuff, almost like Lord &amp; Taylor to re-deserve themselves?
That could very well be, you know, and that's what I mean about being adaptable and flexible. Now that we have to do moving forward because we don't really know what the future really, you know, this new normal is going to be a little bit different, I would imagine. And so just making sure that we're able to address these changes and doing them quickly and efficiently, I think is going to be key.
Thank you.
Rose, on that topic, one of the things that recently we've been doing, it just reminded me when you said the TPZ, is that Rose has been going, starting, just you've done it once or twice, but a way to go to the TPZ and give them kind of an economic update. And that's something new that we've never done before, where the planners come to the EDC meetings and kind of given updates about what's going on and planning. But Rose has never really gone to the TPZ. And as you know, the TPZ has very stringent rules about how they have to make decisions. But talking with our planner and Rose, we thought it would be relevant, especially that they could get an economic update about different things and about some different levels of flexibility and things like that. And I think that's been very beneficial, just like with the Lord &amp; Taylor, that the TPZ, that we don't all live in a bubble and that we can communicate back and forth and do that. So that's something new that you have just started this year. So I think that has been, and I think we're going to see more of that just because they're going to have to be flexible about the different spaces and what we're going to need to do.
Just a comment. Rose, I think we're very fortunate, Farmington is very fortunate to have you here and have you so engaged and so engaging with the community and so interactive with the different components of the town that are all touched by economic and driven by economic development. Because it takes that kind of coordination to make growth truly happen. And you're just as phenomenal what you've done.
Well, thank you. And I have to tell you, I love, I love working here and being part of this team. So it's very mutual. And we love what you do. What do they say, it's not considered a job? So I have to say, every day I'm excited to come in.
Well, I saw you laying a lot of this groundwork years ago. And now it's really taken off of the fact that we actually have a sponsor for it. And now it is self-sustaining, I would imagine, which is where we wanted it to go. And that's wonderful. And the emails supporting the small businesses in town, that's nice to see how that's really taken off as well. So thank you for all you do for our economic development here.
Other questions for Rose?
Rose, I'll just add, you said a couple of times, adaptable and flexible. And I think that's probably been integral to this year of you and economic development. You really did a great job of reaching out to those small businesses, finding where the successes were and passing along the information to the other businesses. So more and more get open. And having, a year ago, somebody said they were going to have tables in their parking lot and people were actually going to show up and eat. That would have been, it would have been last night. So encouraging people to do that and create spaces that are welcoming during these unprecedented times has been fantastic. And that, in addition to your regular day-to-day business of encouraging the companies that come here, work here, grow here. I know we've had a number of visits and just recently from the governor congratulating our businesses in town for continuing to grow and helping Farmington and the state as a whole. So thank you for your part in all of that.
My pleasure.
I think that's it for Rose unless you have any other questions?
No, how many people have been responding to your pictures on Explore Farmington for the new website?
Well, they really do like them. So it's been very good. And we're also trying to submit, have people submit pictures for the town website to keep that updated too.
Great. Thank you.
Fourteen and fifteen?
Aye. At fourteen and fifteen.
I make the motion to tentatively approve pages fourteen and fifteen of the economic development.
Second?
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion passed.
Can you go ahead and speak up, Rose?
Thank you very much, Rose.
I thought now maybe we would do our benefits account, which is page sixty-six and sixty-seven. So this is the other group of accounts and it includes funds for employee benefits and contingencies. And this has our town pension account and the health insurance account. And as you can see, what we talked about a little bit is that, and Peter, I think, is on the pension board and Joe will give an update too, is that our pension board has made a decision that to reduce the assumed rate of return on pension investments from seven percent to six point eight seven five percent. And even though that percentage change seems very little, it is expensive. So the retirement board took this action after reviewing the actual investment returns over the past few years and capital market forecasted for the next ten years. And it's the board's goal to phase in a reduction of the assumed rate of return over the next few years until it's at six point five percent. The reduction in the assumed rate of return will result in approximately a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar increase. This account also funds the employee's share of the matching contribution for employees in the defined contribution plan. So as you know, our retirement board and Joe were very serious about making sure that we fund our pension plan appropriately. And this is a recommendation that they've made. I think it would be fair to say, if they had their others, they'd say to go even further than what we are recommending. But I think a phased-in approach is, because it is costly to do it, is what Joe and I are recommending. Joe, do you want to maybe speak to it a little bit with the pension boards, what their thoughts were on this?
Sure. And Kathy pretty much summed it up, but the board's been looking at the assumed rate of return. You may not, somebody may have called if you were on the console ten years ago, our assumed rate of return up until the major financial collapse in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, we were going with the assumed rate of return of eight and a half percent a year. And just to explain, the assumed rate of return is what they, what we assume or what we estimate the portfolio, the investment portfolio of the pension plan will return each year based on the investments and the performance of the investments in the portfolio. And up until that time, it was, you know, an eight and a half percent return was a fairly reasonable number to, or target to have. Returns were taking, occurring. And then, of course, everything changed in two thousand nine with the financial collapse. And we lost a lot of value on our pension plan. And we've gotten to that point where you're not seeing that return on an consistent level. So starting in two thousand nine, the return went from eight and a half percent down to seven percent. And they did it gradually over a number of years, reduced it by a quarter, quarter percent each year. And what happens with the, when you do something like that, you're estimating you're going to take in less revenue. And the first thing you do with a pension plan is you have to estimate what your liabilities are, how much you're going to have to pay out each year for the next thirty years or for the life of the plan. And then what you need, what you're going to get, again, using that assumed rate of return, what you're going to get in income from your investments. And the difference is what you end up, is your contribution that you have to make, that the plan sponsor has to make or other members have to make. So what will happen now is that we looked at the results, what's been occurring over the past ten years. We looked at what's, I guess what's not the past ten, over the past few years. And then what we looked forward, what was the capital, what were the assumptions based on our portfolio and what our risk tolerance was, what we could expect, reasonably expect to have for return for the next ten years. And our portfolio, we did, our actuary actually did independently, they did an analysis. And then our investment consultant also did an analysis. And they pretty much incurred that we were in the six and a half percent to the six and three-quarter percent range on our returns based on our current asset allocation and our risk tolerance levels. So the goal, the pension retirement board decided they would like to return, reduce that number to the six, get closer to six and a half percent. And again, because you're going to assume that you're going to earn less, you're going to actually, you have to, you have to increase your funding contribution. So just alone, going down from the, we're with the seven down to six and a half, will basically add about a hundred fifty-six thousand dollars a year onto the contribution. And that's in addition to whatever other, a lot of the things, factors that will impact the contribution level. So they feel very strongly and it's supported by the data. I hate to use that term, it's probably a part of it the past year, but it's supported by the data that we should be in the, at an assumed rate of return of less than seven percent. I'm not sure I necessarily agree with the six and a half, but, you know, it should be closer to the six and a half than to the seven percent. That's what's causing that. That's what their philosophy was with that account.
Questions for Joe? On the bench.
In conjunction with this, Joe, thank you very much. Is there any, no modification in the risk allocation as to the philosophy?
No, we're really, what we have right now is we're close to seventy, thirty on our investments. We're seventy percent equity and thirty percent earned fixed income. It's probably, probably more like sixty-seven, thirty-three, something like that. And that's pretty much the risk tolerance that we feel. The risk tolerance to me is how much, obviously, it's like, I don't want to say it's like gambling, but it's like gambling. What you're willing, how much are you willing to lose or how much are you willing to risk? And that's pretty much where risk tolerance is with the plan. And that's pretty, that's actually pretty aggressive for municipal plans. There are a lot of plans that are fifty-fifty. So being sixty-seven, or roughly sixty-seven, thirty-three is pretty, is a pretty good level. And then within that, there's good level. And then within that, there's also a breakdown on investments. How much is going to be in value? How much is going to be in growth? How much is going to be in emerging debt? How much is going to be in emerging, emerging markets? We basically look at all those factors, and again, model the portfolio based on that. How much money is in international funds and that type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Thanks, Joe, for the explanation there. And I think it does make sense that we're seeing historically lower returns, that we do bring down the assumed rate of return so that we can keep the pension fully funded, which I think is important. My question is, I'm trying to remember, do we manage the portfolio ourselves, or do we outsource that to an investment company, or how's that done?
The way I set up is the retirement board has ultimate responsibility for how the funds are invested or how they're managed. But what we do is we have an investment advisor. We hire a company, the Mayo Schneider is the company's name now that emerged. It used to be producer investment advisors. They merged the Mayo Snyder into the Mayo Snyder's name. We have, we use those as our investment advisors, and using their guidance, we go out, we don't invest in stocks directly. We're, we have a stable of mutual funds. So, we're basically in different mutual funds, different categories and different classes of mutual funds. And we, the investment, I'm sorry, the retirement board meets quarterly, reviews the investment performance, reviews the analysis as to how the fund is doing, if there's any warning signs, and the investment, retirement board will then decide whether they want to retain the mutual fund, or they want to fire the, fire the mutual fund, so to speak, and go in a different direction.
And most mutual funds are benchmarked to, like an industry or something like that?
Right.
So, I'm sure they're tracking, you know, is it, is this fund performing at that level of the benchmark, above or below? And then if it's below, then they are probably considering whether to change that investment?
Right. We look at the individual, we do it in three different, we monitor in three different ways. One is the, obviously, the quantitative. You look at the fund's performance against its benchmark, whether it's EPO or the S and P or wherever. And then you look at the overall grouping of those mutual funds. For example, we have a stable, we have five or six international funds. And we look at that stable of funds, and we have a blended benchmark, which is a consolidation of various benchmarks that are relevant to those types of funds that are in there. And we'll match up to see how well we do against that blended benchmark. And the overall plan has a blended benchmark, a benchmark, and we will look at the performance against that benchmark also. In addition, there's usually qualitative or what I call subjective things that you look at, and when you're looking at the funds, and that's, you're looking at things like a change in management style, a change in ownership of the fund, a change in fund philosophy, things like that. And that's more, again, it's more subjective. And why are you concerned that the longtime manager of the funds has just retired and somebody else has taken over, or if the fund's been bought by another investment company? You have to look at those, and those are more subjective, but those can impact what your philosophy is for why you invest in that fund. And so, and some of our funds are actually, they stretch across, they straddle different disciplines, so you may have a blended benchmark. You can't just go with one benchmark, you have to look at two benchmarks for that. So, and that's basically how we monitor. That makes sense. Thank you, Joe.
Other questions for you?
Yeah. Joe, thanks for everything you're doing. I just wanted to give you a follow-up question from last year. And that was, we were discussing whether or not conditions were good for considering, or the healthcare accounts for the school and the town together. And you said that there are two different ones, because sometimes they're favorable, sometimes they're not. You said that there could be cost savings if that, if conditions were right. I'm curious to know how conditions are essentially now.
Actually, I guess, I probably don't really know how they are now. I tell you what was going on, it's kind of a strange market right now in healthcare, or at least in our insurance plan. But before I even say that, I'll preface it by saying that I recently had a conversation with the Director of Finance and Operations for the Board of Education. They seem to be in the market for a new health insurance consultant, and we should be in the market for a new health insurance consultant. So, we are talking about possibly going, doing a joint RFP and hiring one consultant, you know, for both plans. But looking at the town health insurance, when the pandemic hit, everything stopped. I mean, it was unbelievable. We had one month, we were self-insured, so every month we had to pay claims. And Blue Cross pays the claims for us, we reimburse Blue Cross. We had one month where we had 14, maybe, I'm sorry, we had probably $5,000 in dental claims, and that was it. I mean, people just stopped using their insurance. And obviously, people were scared, you heard that before, they might go to the emergency rooms, they might get any type of medical coverage, they didn't want to expose themselves. So, our claims actually really dropped dramatically, and it reflected, it reflected in our renewal rates for next year. So, and a lot of places have actually come back. And I think, I heard in the board's conversation last night, and actually, they sound like their claims have come back, you know, very stronger than ever. Ours have not done that. We're, we're pretty, we're not as flat as we were, you know, last March, April, May, and June, but we've probably come back to maybe 70% of what we were doing before. It's, and actually, in most of our claims, and especially our catastrophic claims, are prescription drug claims. More and more, the illnesses that our employees have are dealt with with prescription drugs, cancer drugs, things like that. And they're heavy hitters, they're large numbers. But we haven't really seen our claims come back. So, you know, for us, it looks good. I'm not sure it looks so good for them, based on what I heard last night in their presentation. So, but we are, again, we are looking at the possibility of going with one consultant, and hopefully that will work out for us. We'll be able to do that.
Well, as you mentioned, it sounds like it could be advantageous to the town financially to have more, you know, put together one package. So, I wish you good luck with that.
Yeah. The other thing, if one of the, one of the problems, one of the problems we have is we do have different plan years. They change their plan year to a September through August plan year. We're still on a July through June plan year. There was Cigna, we're with Anthem. Our plan structures are very, very different in terms of the benefits that we provide versus the benefits they provide are very different. But it's not saying that you couldn't do something. We do, we do fund a one pot money. You know, if you look in your audit reports, you'll see one, you'll see one self-insurance fund, that fund pays the claims for both the town and the Board of Education. So, the county wise, we are one unit. It's just that we have different plans, they have different plans. And it would take, probably takes some negotiation on both sides to get our plans to be similar to, to realize an economy.
And one of the things, Brian, it will be interesting, and you know, Joe and I talked about, hopefully, that we'll be able to, again, go out to an RFP, but we've done it quite a few times, and we haven't been able to save money. And so, that's, that will be the interesting point to see if we are going to, because I think what happens, and we've talked about it before, is that we're, our move across the field gives us a spectacular deal not to lose us, and the same thing happens on the board side. And so, I mean, it seems to make sense that you should save money, but we've done it, I think Joe has, maybe has done it two or three times, that we've gone out and we didn't save money. But hopefully, this will be the time, and, but it's good that we're going to be able to do that.
Well, mine are not doing it if we're not saving money.
No, it's strange, you would think.
It was strange, as Kathy mentioned, the first time, Blue Cross put out an offer to keep the town, retaining the town's business. Cigna put out an offer to retain the board's business. The second time, it went out, just the opposite happened. You know, Cigna was very aggressive with the town and wanted to basically get the town's business. And their, their plan for the board, their offer to the board wasn't that great. But Anthem gave the board a fantastic deal and basically gave us, and like said, goodbye to us. So, it was one of those things where it really, it didn't, it didn't work out the second. It just was bizarre. And again, there's a lot of shakeup that's taking place, a lot of change that are taking place in the healthcare insurance industry. And there's a lot more options up there for towns and for boards of education to go in different directions.
I think, Joe, Kirk may come wrong, but again, it's someone, our claims are obviously different. You know, it, you know, we're not really a like-like community. And so, you could see, like, we, our health insurance this year has done really, really well in comparison to the school's health insurance that hasn't done as well. And so, our claims are definitely not the type, same type of claims. And I don't know if that matters when it comes down to merging it, but we, you know, it's not unusual for us and then the board not to have the same type of years for health insurance. They can have really good years, and we have really bad years. This year, we had really, a really good year, and they are not doing as well. So, it's, it's the different claims and I think the different makeup of the participants.
It's one, we're really glad that we look at for opportunities and don't take them if they're not good for us.
And then, I think the only other thing, TJ, on this account, just wanted to mention that I think the council's aware, but the pension account, it's not the teachers', but this pension account is both for the board and the town, that it supports both sides.
The defined, correct, the defined benefit pension, the board's contribution for that is also in that pension account. Their defined contribution, their defined contribution contribution is that separate line you see on the first page.
Kathy?
Any other questions?
Okay, just to clarify, Joe, you mentioned the 1/56 is the reduction from 7% to 6.78. So, that's a 1/8 reduction is 156.
That's correct.
Okay. And the goal of the commission is to get to 6.5?
That's correct. Right. So, next year, you would see that, if I were right, that same year, next year, you would say that we're going from 6.75 to 6.75 in the year after that. And that's a guarantee, you know, it's going to add in $158,000 just by doing that. And if you, you'd say, well, the contribution may go up more than that because of, you know, again, the liability growing, the plan's investments not doing well. You know, and I just want something out about, when we talk about plan investments, we capture plan investment performance as of June 30th to be here. And it's unfortunate that in the past few years, at June 30th, the investments didn't look that great. You know, last year, at, on account, 2010 on a calendar year basis, we probably were at a 13% return. At June 30th, the 2020, six months later, we're at 2%, a little over 2% return. Anyway, and again, that was what happened, right? During the month of March and April last year, when the whole, you know, the whole financial markets collapsed, we went from, just to give you an idea, when we were sitting here last year, I was telling you that we had $97 million in the pension plan. By the beginning of May, we had $47 million in the pension plan. And by June, June 30th, we were back up to $92 million in the pension plan. So, it's, the investments was a roller coaster in those six-month time period. I can tell you today, and I probably shouldn't have probably jinxed myself, but we're at $107,000. So, you know, right now, if we were on a fiscal year basis, the pension plan's investments are returning 18%. And if that holds up for the next four months, you know, next year, that contribution may go down.
Joe, would there be any logic to changing, at what point we look at, as we sit in here and make these decisions in March?
The problem is timing. And just to give you an idea, again, prior to 2010, we would make, we would have the actuarial report. The actuarial report is done every July 1st. And then, they would give us the number, what amount we have put in the pension plan. And we would then have to pay it immediately. So, what would happen is, and what happened in 2009 was that we had budgeted, let's say we had budgeted $1.3 million for our contribution, because that's what we had budgeted the year before, we factored in some increases on it. So, we budgeted $1.3, $1.4 million. The actuary came back with a report in November and said, you have, you have to pay $2 million. And it's like, well, we don't have $2 million this way, you have to pay $2 million. So, we didn't pay $2 million that year. It was the only year that we did not make our required contribution, because we didn't have the extra money to make that contribution. So, we switched it up, and what we did is we said, we'll still do the actuarial report on July 1, but we're going to do it for the following year. So, when the actuary report comes out in December, it tells us what the contributions could be for next year. It doesn't tell us what the contribution will be this year. And we stick with the July 1 date, because that's the standard fiscal year date. And we're, under our charter and under state statute, we have to be on a July and June fiscal year, so we keep our pension plan on the same fiscal year basis, or plan year basis.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for you?
So, overall, I would just say on the other, in our benefits account, I think that it's a large dollar amount. And so, we're seeing that our health insurance did so well, and that we were able to really support the pension plan. And so, again, you know, the overall increase was only 0.79%. And a lot of that, we obviously do because of our health insurance, we have a good claim year.
Right.
Page 66 and 67, TJ?
Correct, yep. I make a motion to tentatively approve pages 66 and 67. Second?
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion passed.
So, TJ, I would suggest that the library is pretty much on their way, probably in five minutes or so. Maybe we take just a couple-minute break. The library will get here, and we'll do the library, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Are we still eating, Julie?
What was that?
Are we still eating?
We're eating after the library.
Okay, just checking.
Okay. We may not, we'll see.
Trying to split that by and not giving us our food.
This is our, this is the plan.
Only your salad, but you know, I haven't eaten in a long time.
I got your snacks. We're going to have, yeah, we're going to take a, we take a two-minute break, then the library's here, we'll do the library. If you guys are hungry, then we can eat, and then we're going to do public work, and we're going to do the revenue.
Right.
Okay? So, take a two-minute break.
Two-minute break.
Thank you.
Thank you. And are we back on?
Yep.
Page 17 is the library grant, third line down. And you can see it's the manager is a 3% increase and it's $2,761,568. And we have our library group here, and I'll introduce Chris Linkwood, our new library director, and you can introduce Dory and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Great to be here, thanks for the opportunity. Yes, I'm relatively new, I've been here since July, so you know, nice to be here in person. And Dory Andrews, our chair of the library board is here with me as well, and I enjoy a brief statement.
Yes. Well, thank all of you for your time this evening, and we're gonna be brief, we know you've had a long day already. But I'm Dory Andrews, the current chair of the library board, and Chris just introduced himself. It's actually been an interesting year for all of us with COVID, since we were here last March. You know, our former library directors left, we had an interim director who did a great job until we were able to hire Chris and have him come on last July. And thank goodness we were able to find an interim director who was willing to take us on in the midst of making COVID plans and all of that. But the libraries are doing our best to continue to serve the community throughout the COVID problems, from having to close initially and get CPE from staff and protective screens for staff, to during that period of time, all the staff were wonderful about working from home, fielding calls from patrons by phone, doing remote planning and doing remote Zoom sessions. So we felt it was very important for the library to continue serving the community for help with employment matters and all sorts of matters during this period of time. So we were turned to curbside pickup from March to August of last year. In September, we started offering limited access again and online programs and all of that. The large community room at the library is closed for obvious reasons, and we're also using it to, for all the book returns to go in there while they sit for a week before they can go back out to other patrons again. So the staff has really been wonderful and had a lot of extra work they're running through with the result. So we're very proud that the staff has risen to the challenge, you know, Chris came in under trial by fire and has served us well. We're now working on a phase three opening plan, we've just gone to some Saturday hours for curbside pickup. As of April 5th, we're planning on allowing limited access again, we shut it. We opened for a while and then shut down when the surge started coming back through. So we're hoping, assuming these other strings don't go crazy, that we can open for limited access. Then June 1st, we're gonna add additional hours per week and hope that we can be fully open to people by fall. Meanwhile, the staff is planning grace programs for both adults and children over the spring and summer by Zoom. They're planning to have fun activities outside so that they can have in-person activities with kids. And they're really being enormously creative to try to continue to serve the community during this time. So we have a quick PowerPoint presentation, which I'd like to turn it over to Chris to run through, and either of us would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Dory. So again, thanks for the opportunity. You know, I was telling a group of librarians at a meeting the other week, I graduated from a library school in 1989, and I missed the pandemic 101 course. I wish I'd taken that course, because I could have been prepared. But really, in essence, as Dory mentioned, the staff, prior to my coming on board, did an amazing job, really pivoting very quickly and closing in March and then kind of going to curbside and grab-and-go services. So continuing to serve the public, obviously, as best we can. As I turn to the, if you'll go to the next slide, please, the budget, as Kathy mentioned, we have two major sources of funding, as you know, the town in Farmington provides the bulk of our funding, obviously, and we are asking for a 3% increase in our grant from the town in FY22. And the other major source of funding is obviously the Farmington Village Green and Library Association, which provides about 10% of our operating fund. So they're giving us about a 4.5% increase relative to our budget this year. And then, of course, we have other income, we do charge fines and fees, and we get some income from delivery, the state reimburses us for delivering items to other libraries. And as well, we get some donations from our friends, our wonderful friends group, and so, you know, and we get some grant funds. So those basically comprise the other income for a total budget of $2,994,981. And you can see again, the comparison, I think the 3% increase is in line with, you know, the increases in prior years based on my knowledge. The next slide. So just highlights from the past year, fiscal year FY2021. Again, Dory's kind of mentioned, we responded to COVID-19, been putting in place a four-phase reopening plan, we're kind of in phase 2.5 right now, I'll get into some of that. But you know, the COVID obviously impacted our usage figures significantly, and I'll show you some of those numbers later in the presentation. And I just wanted to kind of give you a sense of how we compare to our peer libraries, so I have got a slide with some information about our peer comparisons. The Board of Trustees, I can't say enough about what they've done and accomplished in hiring a new director and really keeping the ship running, you know, over the past year. Dory and I have formed a few new committees, Capital Planning Committee, a Technology Committee, Personnel Committee, and a Farmington Committee. So we'll talk a bit about the initiatives of each of those committees. And a couple staff, in addition to myself, have started this past year. Actually, Brent Siklikki is our new facilities manager, I think he started just before COVID hit in March, he started last February. And Sean O'Shea is our marketing and publicity librarian, she started about, I think, three months ago. So we've got some new staff. And next slide. So the four phases, as Dory mentioned, kind of last March, mid-March, we stopped providing in library access to the libraries, initiated curbside pickup at both the main library and the Barney library, started really providing services remotely by phone and email, we initiated online programs for children, teens, and adults, Zoom is obviously the platform there. Starting in September, we kind of reinstated some limited browsing, the health metrics at that time allowed us to kind of, you know, provide some limited access to the library and, you know, allow people to use a computer by appointment, use a study room, et cetera. But then, as we got towards the holidays around November, we did see spikes in the virus, so we put that on pause, and we are currently still on pause, and I'd call it a 2.5 phase. We did add Saturday hours as of March 6th, so we're serving people six days a week, again, not our full operating hours, obviously. Phase three coming up on April 5th, planning to reinstate those limited services, including passport services, note reservices, using a study room, limited access to the, you know, the new books and materials so that people can browse upstairs in the 7th and 4th, the main library, et cetera. And I think, you know, over the next, I would say, three to six months, we're gonna be very much in a hybrid model. I think the operative word is hybrid, and it will be somewhat in-person, some online, and as we can, as the weather allows, we'll probably be doing some outdoor programs as well during the summer and fall. And then in September, hopefully, you know, as the health conditions allow, I anticipate we'll be able to go back to the full restoration of hours, full services six days a week at both libraries. Obviously, the health metrics need to allow that, and we're monitoring them, we're consulting with the Farmington Valley Health District, we're consulting with the state library and our peer libraries, and we seem to be in, you know, the right, I would say, direction. I think obviously if the vaccine gets rolled out, we'll be able to continue to allow people to really get more services in a normal way, as we say, what the new normal is. Next slide. So these are just some usage figures, just to give you an idea of the impact of COVID over the past year, obviously, the last quarter of FY20, really March through July, we were closed, so essentially providing remote services only. That obviously impacted our building visits, which are down about 25%, the number of items borrowed down about 27%. Electronic borrowing, on the other hand, shot up about 30%, and that's, you know, significant increase. And obviously, because of the fact that we were not open to the public during much of that time period, a lot of people have been using eBooks and eresources and going through our website and using all the online resources that are available. And you know, I guess that's the one silver lining in this, is that people are discovering some of the electronic resources. Now, that's a trend, that's happening throughout the nation, obviously, more and more people are using electronic resources. The other, you know, areas, you can see again, the impact of COVID programs was down about 23%, programs offered, program attendance down about 30%, reference assistance was down. I should note, in terms of reference assistance, it's a matter of quality versus quantity. While the numbers may be down, I know that the reference staff has been providing exceptional service, kind of helping people use their devices, whether they're at home or in the office, to access the electronic resources. You know, there's a lot of information they have to provide over the phone in order to use those resources. So I know that that is a number that's kind of, you know, you might not know the kind of behind the scenes of that, but the reference staff has been doing an amazing job over the past six to nine months, really, you know, training people to use the eresources. And so that number is, you know, kind of doesn't really reflect all the work that they've been doing, but 41,000 is still a pretty significant number in terms of reference transactions. Computer usage is down, obviously, as well, because we were closed to the public. The number of borrowers is strictly a matter of, it's gone down about 11%, but that was a purge of old expired library cards that was done during FY19. So in terms of our, if we go to the next slide at least, of our, how we compare to our peers, this is a group of libraries that are in our peer group, so Avon, Simsbury, Bridgefield, Newington, and last, are in our peer group. And you can just see relative to our peer group and the five-year average, or the five library average, how we compare in terms of our print collection for Capita, in terms of our non-print collection. You know, the Farmington libraries really has exceptional print and non-print collections relative to our peers. And these are obviously other towns of similar size in many cases, but because of the size, particularly of our main library, we have large collections of print and non-print materials. And next slide. And then the number of library visits for Capita, again, you can see how we compare to our peer group relative to the number of people who come to the building, who visit the library, reference questions as well, very good relative to our peers. Circulation for Capita, also, you know, relative to our peers, we're leading the path, as well as in our print material circulation. So all of those are, you know, obvious, you know, I guess a show of the strength of our collections, really. The children's materials in particular, I will say, the circulation contributes about 50% of our total circulation. That is an amazing statistic, really, when you consider the other libraries that are in this group. We are far and away above the other libraries in terms of the numbers of children's books that have been circulating. And it's not just books, obviously, but it's all kinds of children's materials that have been circulating. So another great statistic there. And you can kind of get a sense of, you know, the children's and young adult circulation relative to our peers as well. And these are just more data about, you know, the program attendance, which is very good relative to our peer group, as well as children's and young adult program attendance per Capita. The next slide really just shows you again kind of that growth in circulation of e-media or e-resources. From 2010, you can see the significant increase in usage every year over the past 10 years. Just continues to climb. More and more of our circulation will be, I'm sure, reflected in future years in terms of e-resources and e-media. Next slide. So again, four committees have been very reactive since I started, and, you know, thanks to the trustees who have, you know, taken it upon themselves to lead these committees. I have Matt Sweeney, who's the Chair of the Capital Planning Committee. We've been working on developing a five-year capital plan for the libraries. A number of things are kind of on our list of things that we'll need to address in the, say, next four to five years, one of them being the replacement of the roof of the main library. That's probably the largest capital item that we're going to have to take care of. So we're developing a five-year capital plan in order to put money aside for that eventual replacement. We will be doing some redesign work in the children's room at the main library. Erica Vajrami, who's the children's librarian, has a great plan of kind of redesigning that space, and we're going to be working with a design consultant, more intentional, plan learned spaces, more age-appropriate spaces, zones, instead of the way it is now, which is not as intuitive and functional as it could be. I think it's time for a makeover, as they say. So over the next, say, six to nine months, we'll be starting on that redesign. Under technology, Henry Gu, who's a relatively new trustee, and Henry's Chair of Technology Committee, who's been working very hard. I want to thank Brian Rush here, and he's been consulting with us. Harry Trider is our tech coordinator at the library. We have a number of initiatives. We're going to be developing a technology plan, kind of a multi-year plan for our hardware, software on the public and staff side, as well as a replacement plan so that we can, you know, plan for the replacement of hardware over, say, the next four years on an annual basis, and upgrading in the next, say, three months on our staff and office PCs to Office 365. So kind of a few of the initiatives under the tech committee. Under personnel, Alex Thomas is the Chair of that committee. We really focused on developing a set of COVID-19 policies and procedures. Very shortly after I arrived, we kind of focused on that, and I'm thankful that, you know, we've come out of that in good shape in terms of our staffing. Developing ongoing training and development plan is one of the initiatives we're working on currently. So the staff will have both online and in-person training, as we're able to provide them some training that will be basically driven to the areas of responsibility they have. We are going to be conducting an assessment of our board and staff, our collections and services relating to diversity and inclusion. We think that's an important, obvious social concern, and then we want to be kind of having a part of that conversation. So we're going to be working with an outside consultant to kind of do an assessment and have some discussions with our board and staff about diversity and inclusion. So that'll be coming in this coming year. And finally, we're going to be reviewing the overall structure of the library, kind of getting a sense of our staffing, how we can be responsive to the changes coming down the pike and post-COVID, you know, what's the library going to look like? I think it's very much going to be a hybrid situation, and we want to be prepared for that. So we'll be assessing our personnel and staffing. And finally, the Farmington Room Committee, which is chaired by Andy Barron. We're planning to digitize a number of our local history archival materials and upload them to something called the Connecticut Digital Archive, so that people will be discoverable. And, you know, a lot of amazing local history treasures in that room. Betty Quicken, who some of you may know, knows that room very well, and she's going to be giving us a tour soon so that I can learn about the treasures that are in that space and some of the things that we plan to digitize. And I'm also going to say that I know we are, you know, we've got some great partners in this community, Sammy Whitman House and Andy Verzosa, and I have been having a lot of conversations about what we can do to collaborate together on local history programs and initiatives post-COVID. So looking forward to that as well. Next slide. So these are just a few images of what life looked like before all of this happened, the last March. And, you know, amazing programs that our children, teen, and adult librarians put on day in and day out. It's really been very impressive. They did, you know, kind of, starting in March, go online, and so we have some, you know, grab-and-go craft bags and materials, baby bundles, et cetera. They have been doing this all summer long, into the vlog, and they're continuing to provide services where people can come in and get, you know, books and materials, crafts, et cetera, and continue to be engaged. So that's really, I can't thank the staff and board enough for, you know, all their amazing support and cooperation this past year. So happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you, Chris. Questions? Chris, I'm sorry. Well, I'd like to say thank you because the library is always a tremendous asset to our town and meets a tremendous number of needs. This year has been certainly a challenge for all of you, and I think you've stepped up and met the challenge. The curbside pickup has been great. Really, one of the most interesting things in all these numbers has to do with the reference assistance. Although it was down 21%, it was still above what it was in 2018. So that's a tremendous amount of assistance you've been able to offer, I assume mostly online or Zooming. So that's great, even in these difficult times, you're doing a great job with that.
Thank you.
So thank you for that.
Appreciate it.
So appreciate your coming in.
Thank you so much.
Any questions for us?
Thank you all.
We just want to thank you for your support, and can't wait for the day when we can reopen and welcome everybody back into the libraries.
I like those pictures there. I'll pack memories. Thank you.
Thanks again, guys. Thank you.
All right. I make a motion to tentatively approve page 17 of the Farmington Library. Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, you know. Thank you all.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
So, Ken.
I thought this would be a good time to break for dinner.
I think that's a very good idea.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to take a short break for stuff.
And on the table up there, your name is on.
We are back, thank you.
Uh, we are now moving on to public works.
We are going to do, I thought, revenues. Russ Arnold is on his way, so we will, uh, if we can do the revenues first.
Like I said, we're gonna do revenues.
The revenues are at the first pages of the, um, of the budget book. Um, so they're broken down into nine categories: other property taxes, license and permits, fines and penalties, interest, grants, service charges, other, Westwood's contributions, and the CIP. Um, I'll ask Joe to go through it in detail, but in general, our revenues are down 1.87%. That is the accurate number, but if you look, when we go through it in detail, last year, we, we took $625,000 from the fund balance, and now that number we don't have anymore in the slot, so that's minus, starting, you know, with $625,000. So, Joe, maybe you want to go through the revenue for us?
Sure. Let's go hit some of the highlights in some of the categories, starting with the other property taxes. Taking out the current taxes, which is what the levy, when you set, when you set the tax rate, and not counting that, talking about the other ones, that's projected for next year to be up about $83,000.
We're back?
We are back, thank you.
We are now moving on to public works.
We are going to do, I thought, revenues. Russ Arnold is on his way, so we will, if we can do the revenues first.
Like I said, we're gonna do revenues.
The revenues are at the first pages of the budget book. So they're broken down into nine categories: other property taxes, license and permits, fines and penalties, interest, grants, service charges, other, Westwood's contribution, and the CIP. I'll ask Joe to go through it in detail, but in general, our revenues are down 1.87%. That is the accurate number, but if you look, when we go through it in detail, last year, we took $625,000 from the fund balance, and now that number we don't have anymore in the slot, so that's minus, starting with $625,000. So Joe, maybe you want to go through the revenue portion?
Sure. Let's go hit some of the highlights in some of the categories. Start with the other property taxes. Taking out the current taxes, which is what the levy, when you set, when you set the tax rate, and not counting that, talking about the other ones, that's projected for next year to be up about $83,000, and most of that is going to be, what we think will be, in the delinquent taxes and interest and lien fees. Both of those, we're having a good year with both of those this year. We think that will carry forward into next year. We'll be able to pick up money there. The supplemental property tax, we did, we did have a decline this year. The overall levy was down about 10%. I told the council a couple months ago, we thought it might get down to about 25%, and ended up being down about 10%, so it's not too bad. One of the things, we saw a large decline in the number of motor vehicles being purchased, but the vehicles that were purchased for that supplemental levy, the value was greater, and we should see it higher next year also, because used cars are at a premium right now. Those values have been increasing, and should be reflected on the grant this year. License and permits, the big ticket item there is the building permits. People are staying home, you know, you've all heard the story, a lot of do it yourselfers, a lot of people staying home, putting improvements in. Swimming pools is a hot topic last summer, so we see that building. We don't see it going as strong as this current year, but we thought that it would be an increase for next year, so we increased that revenue by $40,000. Fines and penalties are pretty much stagnant. That's the large driver there is the court fines, and that's moving violations. Whenever we write a ticket, the money actually goes, moving violation tickets, the money actually goes to the state of Connecticut, and they give us back a portion of it. That's been trending downward, and again, that's, part of that is a general trend over the past few years, but also COVID-related, a lot of activity did decline over the past year due to the pandemic. Big decrease in the next category, interest earnings. I did mention this to the council, I think during my financial forecast. When the rates, prior to last March, the rates were actually inching up. We were actually looking pretty good for last year, and if you could see last year, that, very, very, very common left, last year we had, we collected over $650,000, almost $652,000 in interest income. In March, the rates crashed, and the rates have stayed there. Last year, at this time, we were collecting about 2.5%. Someplace we're up at almost 3% on interest rates. Now we're getting .1, you know, .18, we're barely getting .2%. So I cut that in half from what we budgeted this year. We're not gonna make this year's revenue estimate, as you can see in the estimated column, and it did increase slightly from what the estimate was, based on more money coming in, and some slight uptick in the interest rates, but had to caution them, because this is actually one of those accounts where if the referendum is successful for the high school, we're gonna borrow for the first six months of that project of next year, we're gonna borrow cash from the town instead of issuing bonds. We're gonna wait to issue bonds until we get into January, so we will, we'll spend some of our I O cash, or use some of our I O cash during that first six-month period. But overall, the big, the big problem there is the low interest rates. We don't see them going up anytime soon. Colleges, I'm sorry, the state and federal grants, that's, we project that slightly, a slight increase. We used the governor's budget estimates when he released his budget beginning February. One of the, and those are relatively flat numbers from what we received this year. Couple of ones to note, the police grant number is, we have a substantial increase this year, and a 70% increase for next year. The state, we get a grant for having the regional dispatch. We do the dispatch for Burlington, so we're considered a regional dispatch, and there's a grant we get received for that. That was recalculated this year, and because of that, we're getting substantial, we're actually getting almost double what we were getting in the past. So, and that, that grant's going forward, should be about $130,000. And the other one, just to point out, is equalized cost sharing. That's the education grant. That, again, looks like this could be flat for next year. There's not much, not much movement in that grant. Chartered services are showing an increase for next year. You've all heard, and some of you that work in the field probably know, real estate's been going crazy. People have been buying, buying in some houses rapidly. That's resulting in conveyance tax increases, and also in the recording fees, Conclart fees, the recording fees, and those numbers are up dramatically from what we budgeted this year. We see that carrying forward into next year, for the most part, and so, we didn't build it up to where we think we're, we didn't build it up as high as what we think we're going to get this year. We think there will be some leveling down, but we did increase those to revenue accounts significantly for next year. On the other revenues, on the second page, a big item to point out there is the other assessments. That, we had budgeted, that's the assessments of what we're charging the other towns that use, utilize our sewer system, our wastewater treatment plant, Canton, Burlington, Avon, and the UConn Health Center. And by their agreements with the town, they have to share in the costs of the upgrade that took place. So we did levy assessments, we estimated initially, we were uncertain how it was gonna shake out, but we knew we were going to get something in the, in the current fiscal year, so we budgeted $450,000. And we did the final closeout on the project, and we did the final flow, and did the calculation. We actually were going to receive almost double of that $450,000 in the current year. The year we're in right now, we're looking at $867,000 in assessments, and next year, it'll be about $811,000 in assessments. That'll be coming in from those three towns and the UConn Health Center. So that's a substantial increase from the current year in the revenue count. And then Kathy pointed out in other transfers, if you recall, last May, when you balanced the budget, you took back some of the money out of, say, you had sent to the capital budget for the parson purchase. You took that money back in as a revenue item to the general fund. And unfortunately, you know, that's a one, that was a one-time item, so we do not have that for next year, so that does reduce overall the non-tax revenues. And then the final item we have is the Westwood's contribution. As Kathy mentioned before, the Westwood's well course is doing great, and they are gonna make their contribution this year, and we anticipate that they'll be able to make their contribution next year. So overall, that's the non-tax revenues, and what they look like. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Questions for Joe?
Joe, just what was recorded today in the Hartford Current that potentially, through the new federal spending program, Farmington potentially might get $5 million. Can you tell us how that works, and, you know, through past experiences, you know, what we can expect from this, possibly, from past experiences?
Yeah, I've read a lot about it, and I actually have a kind of disappointment with five million, because when I did the calculations, it was probably closer to seven, nine, but they think it's five, it's five. It's money that's gonna come to the, there's not a lot of information out on it yet, and a lot of it has to be, regulations have to be developed by, in this case, I guess it's gonna be the Department of Treasury, as to how the money's going to be distributed, and whether, and how can be used for the money. I can't tell you this, supposedly, there's $2.5 million guaranteed coming to the town of Farmington. It's coming, based on a population basis, it's coming into what they call trenches or trances, trenches. Half of it is supposed to come within the next 60 days, and the other half is supposed to come one year afterwards. That's the good news. The bad news is, it's very limited in scope as to what you could spend this money on. And two of the things it specifically says, and actually, there's been a lot of controversy about it, because the people who wanted the language put in there aren't happy that the language strung it up, and the other people, I think there's a loophole, but, but basically what it says, you cannot use this money for pension funding, and you cannot use this money to reduce your taxes, or reduce either the increase in your taxes, or reduce your taxes. So those, but other than that, the spending part is also limited. It's supposed to be devoted to expenses related to the pandemic, and it could go, for example, overtime or premium pay for essential workers during the pandemic. It can go for, it can go directly to people who are working, central workers through the pandemic. It can go towards providing some type of assistance to businesses that are suffering because of the pandemic. And then, interestingly enough, it also could go towards certain infrastructure. It can go towards water treatment plant infrastructure, wastewater treatment plant infrastructure, and then there was one other infrastructure. I'm sorry, broadband, that's broadband, thank you. Broadband infrastructure. So, to be honest with you, I'm not sure how, and I would question if you could wait until the regulations come out. The other part of it that is definite, you're gonna have until the end of calendar year 2024 to spend this money. So it's not like it's coming in, it has to be spent right away. It's, I'm guessing that this, it sounds very much like the community development black grant program, where money doesn't, money can't supplement your budget, it has to be for projects outside your budget, type of thing. It sounds more and more like that's what they're looking at. As a matter of fact, the things I was reading today, in the chats I was on today with my colleagues across the country, was that a lot of this, if you think of this in terms of the community development black grant, you're gonna probably end up accommodating for it in some way. Now, there's a second portion that's supposed to be distributed, it's gonna be distributed through the state, the money's gonna go to the state, and that's supposed to be also, it's supposed to be on a county-wide basis, and basically, it's a larger pool of money, and they're supposed to give, and you're supposed to get money based on your population versus the population of your county. And looking at that, if that's the true formula that they're gonna use, that's like another $5 million to the town of Farmington. But I know very little about that, or how, and I think it's got the same limitations on spending as this money does, but very little information's come out on that, that portion of it.
So with the bill itself, they didn't put much detail on how the money could potentially be used. You're just going by what you're talking here, what you found out today, as it's.
Right, it's basically, the bill is available to look at, and there's certain sections of the bill that are available, you could, you could go out and read certain sections of the bill, and, but right now, I've read three different interpretations of the bill, and all of them are pretty similar to what I just mentioned in terms of the restrictions on the money. I think the only really unknown for, like, people at the town like Farmington is that second portion of money that's gonna come out, how that's gonna be allocated, because that's gonna be, you know, going through the state, the 2.5 is supposed to come directly to the town from U.S. Treasury. The other portion is supposed to come through the state of Connecticut to municipalities. And what complicates Connecticut is, it's supposed to be done on a county-wide basis on the assumption, like, what, as you know, even though we consider ourselves in Hartford County, there is a county government structure there that would actually distribute it, so it would be the state that would do the distribution. So that's what we know so far.
That's it.
Other questions for Joe?
Joe, I haven't read the same, the per capita would be a substantially different number than that 2.5 that I saw today online, so let's hope that's what they actually go with, and if more money come in.
The, and then some of this is supposed to be earmarked towards the education versus the town. There's a whole nother section of the bill, or of the law now, of the public act that talks about education and allocates funds to education. I did not, I don't know what the numbers are for that, or how the allocation's gonna take place, but there's a whole appropriation and section of that bill that just feels solid with education in the pandemic. Primarily, most of this to do with reopening, and with addressing the mental health needs of students, and possibly online learning.
Yep. Thank you. Any other questions for Joe?
I am surprised that our dog licenses didn't go up. I figured everybody was buying a dog this year, that's gotta go up.
Yeah, yeah, I did not, I mean, obviously, it's not a significant number, but 50% of whatever Paula collects in dog licenses has to go back to the state of Connecticut. They have a very convoluted formula that they use to get that money back, so even though we retain it, at the end of the year, we actually give them back 50% of whatever we collect.
You're giving back the tail end of the dog.
It's funny, because, and it's just, one of the questions, is putting together some of these numbers, was that, a lot of articles are now coming out, The Wall Street Journal did a big article about how buyers remorse, everybody rushed out in that first few months of the pandemic, or first few, and what houses moved out of the cities, what houses, what dogs, what swimming pools, and now they're sitting there saying, what the heck did I do? And so, it's like, you know, why did I, or why did I do this? So I can imagine some, if dogs are going back, and swimming pools are gonna be filled back in, or whatever.
Okay, if there are more questions for Joe?
Would be a tentative approval for revenues.
I make a motion to tentatively approve the revenues portion of the budget.
We have a motion, the second, and discussion, and done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed, and out of the House.
And Russ is here, and will be on public works pages 43 through 54.
Are you gonna see the books?
The grant's out, Mike.
How you doing? Everyone knows Russ Arnold, our director. Oh, yeah, do you have it?
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, but just a quick show and tell.
So if you remember from our capital projects, we had to describe Tool Cat, and I figured I'd let everyone know what it is. It comes with about seven different attachments. I didn't bring those pictures with me, but I just wanted you to see the actual machine.
So this is our personal reveal?
I, Russ is nice enough, and Scott Zank used to do it for all the capital projects, they put a picture of each piece of equipment in my budget book, so I can remember what they look like.
And I do not know it.
We don't wanna start any fires.
Well, thank you, Russ, for that, I always like the pictures. So Russ's accounts are 43 through 54, and a couple of things to note, it's very flat, so a total account has gone up 0.23%. Again, the salaries are not in this account, it's just step increases, but I do want to note that step increases, you know, are costly, but you can see here that we have hired so many new highway people that our overall salaries have come way down in this account, so, even though, because we usually hire people at a lower rate. So, again, this account is at 0.23%. The civil engineer position, which was funded for half a year in this current budget, is now is gonna be funded for a full 12 months. The highway and ground operation shows that funding for four seasonal summer employees will be used to supplement the regular staff. And again, based on somewhat what we talked about with the police department, there is money that these seasonal help were really very valuable last year, with, again, our rails to trails being used all the time, our riverfront being used all the time, and that's, we supplement our full-time staff with our part-time staff, with our summer help. And I think we may have, did we budget an extra week in there? I think we may have done that, to do that for, for like COVID and things like that, just because we want a longer period of time with the summer help kids there. And other than that, this is a pretty flat account.
Did we have lifecarts, or did you ever?
No.
Are you offering?
Yeah, I'm free this time.
Questions for Russ on these pages moving on here.
What was that? Oh, hold on, sorry.
Do you want to just give, I'll wait to see if anybody's got any questions. An idea on how things were changing this year in COVID, and I know you were shifting somewhat how people were operating, fewer people in trucks, sanitizing, distancing, all that stuff.
Sure, you want me to describe our process?
Yes.
Absolutely. So, we, it was a learning curve for everybody this year, back in March when we separated, we are now, with the numbers where they are, we sanitize our vehicles, our equipment every day in the morning, we'll sanitize them at night after the guys get back to the garage. We weren't using one truck per person for a while. Now that the numbers are down, and if we have to, two guys will ride in the truck with masks on, we have had some discussions with several people to make sure that they are completely following that requirement. Anytime that we need to, you know, pick something up, go somewhere, we, our guys, we have purchased masks for them, they are wearing masks. Same with whether you're in, you know, up in our office in Development Wing, everyone, if we have a meeting, we're just like here, we're wearing masks, we're socially distant, and we are sanitizing the town hall and all the offices every, on a regular basis. It's become just part of our new norm.
And CJ, I could give kudos to Russ because it's amazing how much work had to be done in this building, and Russ really led the charge for the highway and grounds people, but all these shields all over the place, I mean, it was being done so quickly that one day in my office, there was no countertop, the next day I come back in, there's a countertop there. And all the different areas of the town hall, everything had to be updated, you know, whether it was for the election, for the registrars, all the offices, all the air quality, everything that was done, and Russ was really leading the charge on getting all of that done, and really very quickly to have the town hall, even when we were opening up for the tax office, setting up the front with the gentleman that was screening people that came in. So it really did a really great job, and really very quickly, I mean, just everything. So, thanks, Russ.
We'd love, thank you. I would also like to point out that Tom Andrew Blonsky got an award as the COVID, what was the title of the?
COVID expert.
COVID expert.
Well.
We took a vote and she got it.
Was she supervising that vote?
Absolutely. No, 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 no.
I think it wasn't usually my self-proclaimed expert, because I actually got the award to hang in my office.
No, that, you know, Kathy, I watched through the process, having come in and out of this building while it was all going on, and Kathy mentioned a number of times, I appreciate you, Ross, and all your folks for, again, just being so nimble. I think that's how we've got to operate, that's what we do. Now, these, the wards, the councils surrounded by right now are put together for the vote count. And we figured out how to repurpose them, so you could see our pretty faces.
Absolutely. It's a team effort. We have a lot of good people that work in public works, and it was more or less, we talked, Kathy said, you know, here's what we need to do, and we just started doing it. So it wasn't, you know, we just rolled with it, and I got to thank all the people who were involved, it's just, it's truly a team effort. And people, you know, it's for everyone's safety, and that's what we're all looking out for. You know, no one wants to be a number or statistic, and it's not kind of what we have, very few cases in town, which is a good thing, within the town department.
That's it.
Everyone's taking it very seriously.
Well, thank you. Pass along our thanks to all the staff, because it's, you know, COVID didn't happen in a voyage, and I've said it before, we had all the regular business that had to be done, and oh, there was a little storm and a power outage, and there was a situation where your folks did a tremendous job clearing the roads, clearing all the trees and everything around the wires, so whenever Source decided it was finally time to show up, they could just hit the ground running and take care of it. So what was it, 24 hours after they finally hit town, they cleared up and we got power back to 99%. It was just getting into town.
Can I tell you just a quick story? We're hiring a new highway maintenance person, and he actually comes from the tree service, what's our tree company?
That one.
Yes. And he told me this story when I did the interview with him, he said, you know, I said, well, why do you want to come to Farmington? And this is, again, I didn't, I just, first time I ever met him, and he said, I tell you, the reason why I want to come to Farmington is because I was out on that storm, and I was out on Route 4 with, when the whole tree went dear, the old wooden path. And he said, I was there, and your chief of police was with a chainsaw, taking things down, the highway superintendent was there directing, getting everyone set, and he goes, I couldn't believe that the whole team effort of the public work from the police department, and everyone was just stepping up to the plate, and he just said, I really, it's just, I couldn't believe that's how the town worked during the storm system. And he's like, if that's why I wanted to, I needed a change, and I thought this would be a good place. So, I mean, and that was unsolicited to me, but I thought that was cool.
Great.
That how we remembered it.
He missed Peter, that Peter was working the chainsaw too.
Yeah, right.
Me and Paul.
With the chief.
This is a nice story.
And I think that's one of the reasons so many people love being in this town and coming to this town, because it is a group effort, and in situations like that, even more so. How was the dump volume-wise this year? Did we see a lot more? I mean, we had it the storm, but otherwise, are people just spending extra time cleaning up their yard?
Oh, yeah, we had a tremendous increase. We were up about 60% an hour than normal prior to the storm. So.
Did we open up for more hours?
We opened up for, what were we, opened up for two weeks straight? I think we were opening up on Saturday, I don't think we did Sunday, but we were opening up for Saturday, two full weeks, two or three weeks, and then Saturday, it was, people were just cleaning, especially last spring, excuse me, before the storm, people were like, oh my goodness, couldn't have managed, you know, and that's all people did, they were outside cleaning the yard, because there was nothing else to do.
Nothing to do, nowhere else to go, clean up the yard.
A lot of family time and cleanup, but no, it was good. We had different guys working the dump, and because our gentleman who typically does, he's a seasonal part-time guy, and he didn't want to, you know, we didn't want him to be exposed to anything, so we had our guy who's managing the station, and so it worked out well. You know, we met, saw a lot more activity down here than we ever expected, but we got through it. It was a big roll.
And the rail to trails, just tons of people.
Yeah, rails to trails, and that, it's amazing, I mean, it's great to see, and I'm glad I am, that's, one of the projects, I got to say, I'm being proud of, is that rail to trails system that we're completing, and seeing the number of people that use it and frequent it, and myself being one of them, it is mind-boggling, how it's only 12 feet wide. So we're getting more money to make it wider.
Okay, everybody remember that spot?
No, but seriously, it was really well-used, it's still well-used. We're out there, we did a lot of tree work over the last month ahead in Burlington, and, you know, it was trouble to keep people out of the working area, because they're just walking in the snow, and they're going, and they're using it. So it's one of the very good assets for us.
And a lot of really good behavior too. You know, good behavior on the trail, considering how many people were on it, and then with the COVID, I mean, people, we've really got very little complaints of people misbehaving or not, so very good behavior, very respectful of each other. When we had bikes, walkers, you know, everyone.
Bike walkers, dog walkers, stroller, then everyone did seem to be respecting everyone else's space for the most part, and following the regulations. I mean, we had the signs up in different spots, telling people, keep your distance, wear your mask, all that, so I think that helped. And you also had some of the challenges over at Tungus Mead, and what are we putting up? What are we taking down? You know, we had the tennis nets going up and down, basketballs going up and down, so that got to be a wrap-up, the shrink wrap of playgrounds that the kids can't play on. So, interesting year, one for the history books, let's hope.
Exactly, let's not go back.
Any other questions for Russ?
I have one.
Okay. Skateboard park, how are we looking for a timeframe when the budget is done and approved to get it all completed?
That's probably going to be all season, where we have to come up with a plan of what we're going to put in, and what different equipment we're going to get, finalize that, depending on the actual number, if we get to 100,000 days. But we will work through our best to get that done over the summer, spring, summers, get it all finished again.
And stay in the same area, or are you looking?
Stay in the same area, if we have to make it a little bigger, to do that, take some more parking lot, if we have to, depending on the equipment and what the final design will look like.
And thank you for everything you do, Russ, we really appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
So Joe, you got a little time to get your skateboard in?
If we're right on.
I haven't had one.
I need it home at first.
No, you don't.
Russ, something that, in the old snow and ice control, has this terminal that shut down in, on the shore, will that have any impact on us next year or anything, buying material?
No.
Or your cost?
No, it shouldn't, we don't, we weren't purchasing through that.
Yeah.
So, our salt supplier wasn't part of that whole situation. We were, a couple of years ago, we were, and when we heard, we kind of heard rumblings about it, so we stayed, went back, and we always got from the Croy bid, and we stayed with Croy, and go to the state, and then, well, we weren't impacted by that, so everything worked out well.
So, no impact to us?
No impact, no.
Excellent. Thanks, Russ.
You're welcome.
Russ, thank you again. Questions, they ask trees, do we see, you know, problems with all the lines of trees?
Yeah, quite a few. We're watching, and we're, we have a lot that we've been taking down already. They're growing, it's the number of how many takedowns we have, we're constantly watching all, as much of our property as we can, but it's not much of an increase, but a lot of the ash are dying anyway, but they are starting to, the numbers are starting to creep up a little bit.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay, I'll, 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 I'll just say, yeah, thank you for, you know.
Oh, no, no, thank you, you're welcome.
Enjoy walking with me around Main Street, getting, having a better.
Yeah, pleasure.
So that's it for Russ, and that would be with Peter, pages 43 through 54.
Got it. I make a motion to tentatively approve pages 43 through 54 for public works. Joe, Captain, Earl, second.
We have a motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passing unanimously. Kathy?
Yeah.
Page 26?
Page 26. Yes, page 26. Fire marshal. Oh, fire marshal.
Thank you, Joe.
So, fire marshal is on page 26. The account I always like to mention on that is our hydrant charges. I just like to mention it because it's over a million dollars, it's one of our biggest line items, and it does increase, you know, quite a bit, so it's a maintenance fee to various water companies for supplied water service, and again, it's, as you can actually just see how much it lives up every year, it's an expensive line item on the town side of the budget.
Can I have a question on that? Are there any other options with the river nearby? I mean, that's not pressurized water coming out of the river, but is there any other privatized options that we could do? There's the fire.
No.
No.
Not because if you're pressed with, you have the pressure on the line, to provide the fire, the water, to fix the fire, other than geographical system, and given the fact that the majority of the town is already served by public water, we have to, you know, build a reservoir or different ponds and pump them in, just to make.
Couple of more than a million years, isn't it?
Yeah, it's not just for the hydrants, it's for the, that cost is for the line as well, it's for the whole fire system.
Which is throughout the town.
Correct, for all, and that's for all the systems, all the different water companies, actually.
And about a thousand hydrants that are in the business, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that would be?
Peter?
Peter, page 26.
Yep. Are there any questions?
One question. With the extension of the water line at Patterson Park, will there be more and more hydrants up there, or?
Just a, yeah, and the majority of the cost is from Connecticut Water, since it's a predominant company town, they have basically all the water rights, public service rights for the town, and there's agreements that get made, like on the west end of town, for NBC, for the Britten Water on the other side, we have a little bit of a plane bill, we have some of Avon, which is not connected water, they've been purchased, so it's basically wherever the water may be easiest to extend to, and they have their agreements with the, through the state, that allows the different companies within the town, but, and there's varying rates for each of them, but we're only adding two more on that 2,020 to 400 feet of height, basically one at each end of the project. And I worked with Mike Carreno on that, just, I always, whenever we're adding a hydrant or talking about hydrants, I work with the fire marshal to make sure that, you know, we're satisfied to have to give them access for the distance.
I make a motion to tentatively approve page 26, the fire marshal's question. Joe, Captain, Earl, second.
We have a motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passing unanimously.
We have one more account.
Page 42?
Page 42. So, page 42 is building inspector, we do have a change in that account, our long-term building official has recently retired, and so we are, he's retired, and we are looking to have that position be part-time, and then we also have, how we do it, it's kind of a funky way that we have it, so we have a development inspector, correct? Is that what Steve is?
He's project engineer now.
Steve?
But he was a development inspector.
Okay, so Steve is, Steve is the?
Deputy building inspector.
Official and?
Project engineer.
Project engineer. So he does both, so the building, he's a building official and does work for the engineering department. So he's still going to continue to do that. Our full-time building inspector has retired, we'll probably have him come back part-time, and then we're going to evaluate the needs, if we need to look to make it full-time again. But we're going to see right now, there is, as Joe and everyone said, there has been some growth, obviously, with building inspections, but we want to just take, see how it goes before we decide if we want to have another full-time building inspector or not. So we're going to see some savings in that account.
Any questions on that page?
I make a motion to tentatively approve page 42, building inspector. Second.
A motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passing unanimously.
Joe, did I hit all Russ's accounts and all the accounts?
Yes, I said it for Russ.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe.
So CJ, that is all the accounts. We have hit all the regular accounts, we hit debt services, Joe, we did the non-tax revenues, correct?
Yes.
We did that, so we've gone through everything. Do you want me to kind of just give like a little wrap-up?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so if everyone kind of wants to look at their tax and budget worksheet, the front page?
First page.
First page. So CJ had asked me just to kind of give like a wrap-up of, right now we have a tax increase of 4.85%, and we have a expenditure increase of 5.43%. He asked, if to get to a 3% tax increase, what dollar amount? He asked if, to get to a 3% tax increase, what dollar amount would have to be cut out of the expenditure side? And it could come out of education, town, debt service, or capital improvements, I will not say the BOE defined contributions, that's what we owe, so, or debt service, really. So it would be education, town, or capital improvements, those would be the three areas. And Joe, what would that, what was, what would the dollar amount be?
To get to a 3% tax increase, you would need to reduce this budget, reduce expenditures by $1,930,000.
A couple of other things I just wanted to mention, that the capital, just, just as a reminder, is that our capital is at $4,227,000. Our, our target at 3% is $3,386,000, and at our target policy minimum is $2,822,000. So the, the capital alone, based on our lowest level of our policy, is, you know, or 3% is almost a million dollars higher than what it usually is, just to kind of give you a ballpark.
Okay, with that ballpark, could I ask you, let me, Joe, if you know this, if we use that ballpark, and we had the 3% as our capital, which was our high-end target we were talking about to replenish, we requested the board come in and show us the 3%, if they were at 3%, what would that do to our overall number? Do we know that offhand?
It'd be $90,000 plus two. It'd be at, it'd be at 1.7, 1.8 million dollars, so it'd still be shy of your 3%. It'd probably be around 3.1, 3.14, yeah. So you need to reduce it some additional nights.
Okay. Okay. Any questions on the summary at this point? Assembly is going to be the day where we start digging in. What time is the Board of Education coming in at that?
I don't know, I didn't hear with that, I didn't hear, it starts at nine o'clock, so we don't usually, they're usually here, so, but we start at nine o'clock, we've gone through all the accounts, so you guys will really just start discussing where you want to be, and I know that, I think the Board will be here, so you can either have them come in first, or, you know, whatever you guys want. I'll talk to Kathy tomorrow.
Any thoughts on that? If we have them come in first, they're going to know what the 3% would look like, and that might be a good starting point for us all, and that we can carry on with the discussion in this time of year?
Yep.
I still have Kathy and Ellen here for nine o'clock.
Great.
Okay. Good.
Any breakfast orders?
Well, coffee, Anna.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. That covers all our business for today. As we're trying to get to a certain point, I believe you would quote from the great Yankee philosopher, Yogi Berra, "If you don't know where you're going, you'll end up someplace else." Peter?
I make a motion to adjourn the March 11th, 2021, Farmington Town Council. Second?
We have a motion to second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passed. I adjourn. Thanks, folks.
Seven thirty-six.